Get ready to get it started. So, good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is 5:32 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open with a quorum present. The following board members are present in person and/or virtually. I will call on our colleagues that are joining us virtually to make sure that they're in attendance with us. So physically present with us today's District 2 trustee Toby Jackson, District 3 trustee Quentin Phillips, District 4 trustee Daphne Brookins, are you with us?
Good evening, President Ramos. I'm here representing District 4.
Thank you. District 5 trustee CJ Evans is with us in the boardroom. District 6 trustee Andora is with us in the boardroom. District 7 trustee Norman Robbins is with us in the boardroom. District 8 trustee Anna Luevanos is with us in the boardroom. District 9 trustee Ashley Paz, are you with us?
I am with you, President Ramos. How is everyone tonight? It's good to see all your faces.
Good. Good to have you with us as well. And I am Jacinto Ramos Jr., Representative District 1, and I'm present in the boardroom. On March 16, 2020, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended certain open meetings requirements imposed by the Open Meetings Act to slow the spread of COVID-19. This action permits meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act to be hosted by telephone or video conference. This meeting is being broadcasted live via Spectrum Charter Channel 192, the Fort Worth ISD Live channel on YouTube, and a link provided in the agenda. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following notice of this meeting has been posted for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum present in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting by use of Zoom software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at TOMA@OAG.Texas.gov. We will now move to our pledges, which will be led by Mr. Clint Bond.
Thank you, President Ramos. Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. At this time, we will hear public comment. Let me remind you that because of the restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during the board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry, or direct a person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should refrain from mentioning names of individual employees or public officers during their comment. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. No presentation may exceed three minutes unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. Because we're utilizing an online platform, all speakers will be announced to speak in order they signed up. Mr. Clint Bond will announce the speaker's name, and at that time, his or her microphone will be muted for three minutes. Before making your comment, please state your name, then proceed with your comment at the end of the three minutes. Your microphone will be muted. Mr. Bond, would you please call on our speakers?
President Ramos, our first speaker this evening is Stephen Poole. Mr. Poole, are you ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bond. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Ramos and members of the board and Dr. Scribner. I'm Stephen Poole, the Executive Director of UEA. And tonight, I wanted to thank you in advance for your consideration of Agenda Item 13G, a resolution recognizing your employees, all of your staff and your teachers. And when I say all staff, I do mean all staff have been working very hard this year. And the resolution and what you have planned for them tonight is going to be greatly appreciated. I can't say enough thanks to Dr. Scribner and Ms. Molinar and Mr. Ball for their hard work to put this all together. And I'm looking forward to hear the discussion and the resolution tonight. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, our next comments come in the form of a statement that I will read. My name is Marilyn Christopherson. I hold a Master of Science in Social Work, am a cognitive behavioral therapist, a domestic violence treatment provider, a business owner, a teacher, trainer, and mentor, a prevention and intervention specialist, a mental health professional with experience working with law enforcement, the justice system, juvenile and adult probation, a substitute teacher, and an ordained minister from Life Christian University. And I teach anger management classes to those that are incarcerated. I specialize in repairing lives and restoring paths. As a school board, Texas has delegated much of the authority to the local community who elects you as school trustees to govern the school district. You, as a school board, guide the district and equip students for excellence. The community, parents, and students need more intervention help in order to function at a higher level and increase their students' learning, which is struggling, as evident by the lower school attendance. As an intervention specialist, I am asking for an increase of support groups within the district, offering help to students, parents, and staff. The support groups will empower students as we teach them how to fight the internal mind and emotional battle that is waging within. I am asking for a greater school involvement to help the community transition through these challenging times. Support groups are just one solution. I am asking for a broader and more intensive approach of helping students, parents, and staff by offering each a specific support group where they can discuss the challenges and concerns they face. The support group goals should be to include, will include also strategy development and option considerations for possible solutions for their specific concerns. Asking for a family liaison to be added to the school payroll. A liaison is needed to be a bridge between school and home, which is an excellent way of increasing communication and collaboration. Asking for one and a half hours support groups in order to in order for students to address social, emotional, and mental health challenges that they are trying to navigate without adult guidance or direction. Asking for no more STAR testing for this 2021 school year. This test alone being eliminated can significantly reduce stress for everyone. Please know that by helping the family, it helps the student, and this translates to improved school attendance. The family unit is where growth and development starts, advances, and matures. The family unit is the foundation from which the learning and training process begins, and the education system picks up and enhances the growth and development, preparing the student for college, a career, and for community leadership. Timing to help the students and parents is of the essence. Stress and anxiety are conditions that trigger physical and mental changes in the body, and the time has expired. Ramos, that concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. At this time, we will, well, want to thank everybody for their comments this evening, and at this time, we will now turn it over to Dr. Scribner and his team for the next three reports, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, COVID-19 Update, and Lone Star Governance. Dr. Scribner?
Thank you very much, President Ramos. Tonight, we have three reports. First, will be presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Mike Ball. He will be followed by Deputy Superintendent Karen Molinar with COVID-19 update. Mr. Ball's presentation will be our annual financial report. And finally, we'll have a Lone Star Governance, Early Literacy, and Early Math presentation, which will be presented by several members of our team, Chief Academic Officer Jerry Moore, Chief of Students and School Support, Raul Benya, and Shari Washington, as well as our Executive Director of of Data Quality, Sarah Rispey. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Ball.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, President Ramos, members of the board. It's a privilege tonight to present to the board the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. You may also know that as the audit report. This is an annual requirement that all Texas public school districts are required to do. And so, we want to give you a really brief report on that and start out by talking about the audit work is required to be done by an independent external firm of certified public accountants, and the board actually engages that firm. And the firm that the board has engaged to do this work is Weaver and Tidwell LLP, and they're commonly known as just Weaver. And so Weaver is a very reputable and experienced CPA firm. They work with some of the largest districts in the state of Texas. And so, they are very well experienced and very well capable of doing an audit on a district such as Fort Worth ISD. And the partner at Weaver that leads the work in Fort Worth ISD is a lady named Jackie Gonzalez. And she is a CPA, and she's also on this webinar, so that if the board has any questions of her, she certainly will be available to address any of those questions that might come along. The other issue that comes before us is the deadline for doing this work. There is a deadline in the in the administrative guidelines and also statutes for filing the completed audit report with the Texas Education Agency. And the agency provided the opportunity this year to submit a waiver for the deadline, to extend the deadline because of the COVID situation. And our normal timeline would be that we would be doing this presentation in the November board meeting, because the deadline for us typically is toward the latter part of November, November 27. And but because of the COVID situation happening really at the time that the external auditors would need to be doing a lot of their interim audit procedures, as well as some of their actual field work during the summertime, when we were closed and locked down as a community during those times. And so, the board authorized us in September to apply for the waiver. We did so, and TEA has approved that waiver. So now, our extended deadline is January the 28th. And so, we're pleased to report that we've completed the work and we're presenting the completed report to you tonight. And so, we wanted to give you the financial results, just in very brief summary form. This is a 220-page report. I will not be going over the entire 220 pages. I'm sure you're happy to hear. But we did want to give you a brief summary of the general fund. We had total revenues of about almost $787 million, and we had total expenditures of about $783 million. So, we just about broke even. We actually added $3.7 million to our general fund fund balance. And that leaves us at the end of the year with an ending fund balance in the general fund of $205.9 million. And that puts the district in very healthy financial situation, and we need that given what we're experiencing now and what we will be experiencing over the next year or two from our budget standpoint. So that gives us about 25% of the subsequent year appropriations or the budgeted expenditures for the coming year. And so, it puts us in a good position to deal with some of the budget issues that we will have over the next year or two. And so, it is important to note that as required by our board policy, that the audit firm of Weaver and Ms. Gonzalez met with our board audit committee on December 1st. I believe that was last week. A week ago today, as a matter of fact, and went over this report in much more detail than I will do tonight. And the audit committee did vote to recommend to the full board that the report be approved by the board. So, we had a good discussion with the audit committee last week. And then, this is an action item later on tonight's agenda. The, there is a signature page that actually will become a part of the final report where the board president and the board secretary actually sign indicating that the board did approve the report. Then we incorporate that into the report and submit that to Texas Education Agency. And so, as an action item tonight, this will be, it is on the agenda, and I will have very few, if any, comments at that point unless the board has questions at that point. And that concludes the presentation at this point, and President Ramos, certainly if the board has any questions, either myself or Ms. Gonzalez, the the partner in charge of our engagement with Weaver, would certainly be happy to address any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. And my colleagues, if we would use the raise the hand feature on the Zoom app, if you have any questions or comment. Looks like we have none, Mr. Ball. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, President Ramos. At this time, as per board request, our Deputy Superintendent will provide an update with regard to our COVID-19 dashboard and data. And with that, I'll turn it over to Karen Molinar.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, Board Trustee. I'm happy this evening to provide you an update with our COVID-19. As you are aware, we had an update in September, so we wanted to go ahead and update you on how we're doing as a district. The topics we're going to recover or cover this evening will be about our PPE, our COVID training, as well as our district enrollment, some case trends, our staffing impact, some updated TA guidelines, our CDC recommendations that recently have been revised, as well as strategies that we're doing as a district. On this slide, you're going to notice, we shared this beginning of October, all of the PPE supply that we have purchased as a district, as well as received from the state. And each campus on a monthly basis is replenished with the following distribution. You can see our disposable mask, reusable mask, and so forth. We want to share with you our numbers and how we're progressing through our PPE. We're happy to say that we have completely utilized all of our state PPE allotments. So for our constraint number two of health and safety that the board adopted, we are at 100% of distribution of our state PPE allotment. And in our warehouse, we currently have our own inventory that Fort Worth ISD has purchased to replenish for the remainder of the school year. This next slide is, you recall, was also part of our constraint with our COVID training. When we first presented in October, we were at 93.7%. You'll see that we have increased to 95.6. These are our two required trainings for our staff of our coronavirus awareness, as well as the cleaning, disinfecting your workplace. This does exclude our tutors and our substitutes. And each supervisor receives a weekly report, and we're still continuing to reach that 100% mark on a daily basis. But we're really happy to report we're at 95.6% of the entire Fort Worth ISD employees and staff. Here's an update. This is actual a snapshot from yesterday's MUNIS numbers, and that's our enrollment numbers as of December the 7th. December the 7th, which was yesterday, was the first day of our third six weeks. So, as you see, we are at 50% hybrid and 50% in-person hybrid and 50% virtual every day. We did want to share the data from October to December and break that down in our student groups and share that information with you as well. So, we are sitting currently at 50/50 for our campus instruction. Now, we're getting into our COVID trends. This slide you'll see before you, this is about our student data. We've had 4,174 total COVID cases. We have actually broken down this data into four categories to share with you this evening. You'll see the red is if a student tested positive. The light blue is if a family member in the household tested positive. And then, the greenish blue is exposed to a positive student or employee. And then, a gray is if they were exposed off-campus outside of a family member. And these are, of course, reported to us by parents, as well as family members, and then we receive those results. This data is from October 5th to December 7th. And we broke those down in the four categories that you'll see the next couple of slides mirror in those categories. Here, you'll see those four same type of categories, but we broke them down by grade level because we thought you'd be interested to see what was high school, middle school, and elementary being and within those four different categories that we shared on the last slide. Then, we also decided to share the data by student group. So, these are for all of the 4,100 student cases that we shared two slides ago, and you'll see how we've broken it down by our student group with our Hispanic student group showing at 67% of the 4,174 being our most positive case or fit into the four categories. Now, we're moving on to our employee trend. 2,830 employees, and this is teachers, this is nutrition services, anyone that's an employee of Fort Worth ISD, you'll see in one of these four categories, three categories. So, we mirrored the same positive employee, positive household member are exposed to a confirmed positive. So, you'll see the breakdown by percentage. The following slide, we decided to show it to you as if they were quarantined out of the 2,198, or if they were not quarantined. So, you'll see on this slide, the yellow means that they had to be quarantined for the 10 of the 14 days according to our CDC regulations and TEA regulations. And then, if they were not quarantined, they would be represented in the green. The very first part of the data is campus. You'll see that as a 495 campus employees, how many were quarantined and non-campus. And you'll see that breakdown by household members, as well as the amount by the exposed confirmed positive positive cases. Here's the staffing impact. If you look here, we gave you a comparison from our teacher and employee total absences from 2019 to 2020. If you look at 2019, our teacher absences at this time last year, and just remember, we started, had two-week delay on our school year. We were at 21,458. This year, at that same time, we were at 12,884. We actually have a decrease. However, when you look at our fill rate for substitutes, you'll see that our fill rate is less than it was last year. And this is a common problem across the nation because, of course, some substitutes who frequently wanted to substitute in the district are also concerned about COVID. So, having substitute coverage has been a challenge for us in our district. You'll see on the green bars, we did a comparison that included all employees. So, at this time last year, pre-COVID, we were at 52,984 absences. This year, we are actually at 43,671 absences. So, our employees are actually have a decrease in total absences in comparison. Tonight, I really wanted to take time to share with you an update on our TEA guidelines. TEA, on November the 19th, released new guidelines as far as attendance and enrollment. And if you look on the screen here, the district before November 19th, we were only allowed to close a campus or a classroom for five days and then still receive funding. TA, as of November the 19th, they did update that to, we are allowed to close a campus up to 14 calendar days if we cannot sufficiently staff a campus for instruction. That gives us 14 days, which also mirrored the CDC guideline at that time for quarantine. However, you look at Bullet 2, the campus access restriction, we have to offer, of course, remote instruction, and we're limited to a specific campus being impacted due to staffing. And then, Bullet 3 is the most important one. This is still to receive the funding during those 14 days. If you implement a campus closure, you still have to have part of your campus remain open to have access to any student does not have connectivity or use to technology. So, this would mean that not all staff could work remotely from home during that 14 days. So, this is very important. If we ever need to activate this type of guideline that TA has given us, even if we have to close a campus due to a staffing shortage because of COVID, we still have to remain, keep that campus open even without students being on there every day. So, our staff that's not quarantined would need to report to still receive that funding. Now, on December 2nd, we got a new CDC recommendation and guideline. So, the CDC now has updated and said they have given us permission that a non-symptomatic employee that does not show symptoms can be quarantined for only 10 days instead of 14 days. So, the CDC has updated that guideline, and TA also updated and aligned that guideline. As a district, we have not yet updated our documents and follow that guideline because, as you know, we're under the guideline of three different agencies. We do CDC, TEA, as well as Tarrant County Public Health. At this time, Tarrant County Public Health has not changed the guideline for quarantine non-symptomatic from 14 to 10. Dr. Scribner was on a call with Judge Whitley on Monday and specifically asked about this update, and we were promised we would hear something within a couple of days. Once we hear that it is changed to 10 days, we are prepared, ready for communication to change our quarantine from 14 to 10 days at that time. So, while we're waiting, we're just making sure, as we have in the past, we're aligned with all three different agencies with our guidelines. So, what strategies have we put in place? And I know, look at these numbers, even if you have one positive case for a student or employee, it's one too many. However, we are very, very proud of our staff, our custodians, our nurses, our teachers, our parents, and our students wearing their masks, following the guidelines, following the health and safety practices, the cleaning of our campuses, the contact tracing. I cannot do this presentation without recognizing the work of Michael Steiner, Otis Goodwin, Vicky Warren, Raul Perez. We were not staffed to do contact tracing at this magnitude. But they have reallocated resources, and they are doing contact tracing literally 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I get every single email for every contact tracing, and it comes through constantly throughout the night as well as the weekend. So, we really must take time to recognize the work that they've done with this as well. And then, of course, we now offer our own free weekly COVID testing to all of our Fort Worth ISD employees to three of our sites, our Eastern Hills School-Based Clinic, Western Hills Family Resource Center, and our Riverside Family Resource Center. In addition, we do have certain days of the week that we set up our transportation service and our maintenance and operations to offer free COVID testing for our employees. So, that completes my report at this time, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Molinar.
Thank you, Ms. Melinar. Looks like we have questions, comments from, we'll begin with Trustee Paz and then Trustee Jackson will follow her.
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you, Ms. Melinar, for that presentation, that update. I just have a quick question. When our staff is quarantined because of a possible exposure, are we requiring a negative test upon return?
We do not require a negative test upon return as long as they're non-symptomatic within the quarantine date. They return. We do have our staff, of course, continuously checking in with them or their supervisor, but we do not require a negative test before the return to work. Because some of our, not all of them have tested positive. Some of our quarantines have never tested positive, as you can tell in the numbers.
Okay, but what about the ones that have tested positive? Do they have to provide a negative?
No, ma'am. We follow the guidelines of doing the 14-day quarantine. If they're not showing symptoms and a fever, I believe it's 72 hours, and Mr. Steiner's on here. He can jump in if I'm incorrect, but 72 hours without a fever after the 14, within that 14 days quarantine, they can return to work.
Excuse me, I might need to go get the test myself.
I have a spot for you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, President Ramos. I have a quick question on page 6, Ms. Melinar, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
All of the numbers, the percentages stayed static for Hispanic, white, and other. African-American shifted on virtual every day and in-person hybrid. Is there a reason for that? Is that one school, multiple schools? And it would be helpful for us to know all of the schools, who has more virtual and who has more in-person, if we could?
Sure, we're happy to furnish you that report. We can give it to you by school and actually break it down by student group as well.
As long as it doesn't overextend staff right now. That'd be great.
No problem. We'll get that to you.
Thank you, Ms. Melinar.
Next, we have Trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you, staff. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, all of you who contributed to this report. This is phenomenal information. Just, you know, I'm very happy that the public is going to be able to have accurate information now, not just speculation, not wondering, not just, you know, hearsay, but the true numbers, the true data about what's happening here in the district. And so I know this is the, you know, preliminary comprehensive report. And, you know, of course, I would love to, you know, at least be updated as we go along as far as how we look. And maybe not as comprehensively, but just kind of the update of what's happening. The biggest update that I would love to see, given that we have our baseline pretty much intact, kind of, you know, what does our trends look like? Are those spikes happening? Are we on a decline when it comes to student and staff? You know, positive cases confirmed, things like that. That'll be just good, just really great information to be able to see how we're trending when it comes to all those things. But other than that, thank you very much for this. This was, this is a home, we're forward to be able to have.
Thank you. Next, we have Trustee Dohr.
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you, Ms. Melinar and team, for this very informative report. And to the staff that you mentioned for the contact tracing. I cannot imagine the number of hours and the amount of effort that has been put into contact tracing. And it's something that this, we've never had to do before, and now we're doing it. And so thank you to the whole team for making that happen. I know that principals across the district are every morning having to creatively problem solve when teachers are out of, for quarantining purposes, because they are sick, because they have a child that is sick, or for whatever reason it is that the teacher is out. And the ability to fill the position with the sub is challenging. And so I applaud the administrators for their creative problem solving every day. And I wonder if there are any guidelines that the district has as far as what the conditions are on a campus in order to close that campus for in-person learning because of the number of staff that are out?
Thank you, Ms. Dohr. That's a great question. And we've been asked that question. It's really hard to have a criteria or guideline to close a campus because every campus is so unique and different in Fort Worth ISD. And we love that, but when it comes to setting a criteria for closure, it makes it difficult. Actually, our two chiefs of student and school support have designed a four-tier process for campus coverage, which is, which has been great so far. We feel is allowing us to keep our campuses open. We always have room to grow. So I'm sure there's some campus employees or principals who would agree with that statement. So we still need to grow in that area. However, with the four tiers, which is our first tier, of course, is our campus staff covering each other because they do have some additional personnel on their campuses that can help with that. Our second one is our pyramid. One of the, you know, the new, with the boundary lines being changed, we went into pyramid. We have identified support within each pyramid with extra instructional coaches, specialists, intervention specialists, a whole, just a whole group of different employees within that pyramid that we have identified. So if a campus within that pyramid is just having a really spike in a COVID and lack of coverage, we can send employees from within that pyramid to go and assist with that, for that campus if we have a shortage of subs. And then the third tier, of course, is our pyramid subs that we work with. We do have what we call our full-time substitute that have, that were assisting in vacancies. After we did leveling, we were able to fill those vacancies internally. And now we have those additional pyramid subs that we can move around the district. And then the fourth tier is central administration. And these are not our specialists because they're included in the first three tiers. But this is someone, and even in my office, that has some type of campus experience, that has worked for the campus, that has been identified that I can say, hey, we need to go out in the campus, we need this class covered, or the principal just needs support today. And, you know, they're just down a couple key leadership personnel and they just need support on that campus. So phase four is like all hands on deck in central administration that already has not been exhausted and identified. And that means someone that usually is not at a campus on a daily basis, they're going to a campus. And those names, we have been working with each of the leadership team to identify Dr. Washington. So that's our fourth tier. Our goal is to keep our campuses open as long as we can because you saw the requirements from TEA. We technically can't shut a campus down. So once you try to shut a campus down and go in through, for us, it's like we want to exhaust those four phases before we go into a shutdown mode.
Thank you for that clarification. How do you know if a campus is low on staff for a day? Are you looking at the number of substitute jobs that don't get filled? Are the principals, is it the onus of the principals to reach out to you and express concern? Or do they wave a white flag? Do we send up smoke signals? How do people know, or how do you know when a campus is in distress and needs some assistance?
Sure, so that's another great point to bring up. We actually have designed a system that we input our COVID absences are coded differently than regular absences than how we get covered or not. There's different codes that we use in the substitute office. But then also, we do have a special email that's set up that directly links and to the chief of student and school support, our substitute office, our HCM, that alerts us they're having difficulty. Then, of course, we watch these numbers every single day by campus. And the executive director, the principal supervisors are in touch with those principals like every day. If we already know we may have a slight increase at, example, at like a South Hills. Then we're watching South Hills, we're talking to the principal the day before, the night before, the morning of. What's it looking like? What do you need? Okay, go ahead, let's activate the pyramid. Let's go ahead and then activate the 180 subs. And that's not enough, the ED's out there, and then we're getting other central support. So it's a little the old school with the calling and the texting. But we do have it automated in the system where we're actually tracking how many are out for regular absences because you still have people who are ill that are not COVID-related, personal days, family emergencies, doctor's appointment. But then which ones are COVID-related to help, how can we impact that, help support that campus?
Thank you very much, and thank you for that very thorough approach, but also that very thorough answer. Thank you.
Next, we have Trustee Levanos.
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you for this report. Actually, and Trustee Dohr, you asked my question, so no questions for me. Thank you for the answers.
Thank you, Trustee Levanos. Next, we have Trustee Brookins.
Yeah, Trustee Jackson actually asked one of my questions. And then Trustee Phillips gave a comment that was similar to what I'm gonna, what I was gonna say. So ditto to what he said. But my concern is the staff or the teachers that are at 95% that have gone through the training. Is there a timeline for the rest 5% to get that training? Because I hate for any of them who have not gone through the training come up with COVID.
Yes, Trustee Brookins, all of our state school trainings, which is our COVID reports are part of that as well, our COVID trainings. We do have a deadline in February. However, on this one, we monitor very aggressively. We actually have also, under our Cavasso's Carl Alfred and his department, we find that we have to do some different type of access to the training for our bus drivers as well as nutrition services. So we're constantly working through the training for those employees because they don't always have access to the technology. So we're actually doing some different type of delivery. And then we actually do a certificate and we input it under their employee number. So that's very ongoing for us. And then with the turnover of the staff as well in some of those departments. But we're gonna get, you know, if I don't get you to 100, you're gonna see an increase in that. You know how I am, a little competitive. So we're gonna keep, we're gonna be working at it. We do the reports. Arastela Chavez, who is under our Cavasso's, does an excellent job with giving us reports on a weekly basis. And she helps us monitor that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Trustee Phillips.
No.
All right, are you able to hear me now? There we go. So yeah, so thank you, President Ramos. And I neglected to ask during my portion there, you know, you say we mentioned the allotment of state PPE that we were able to get out and everything. I guess through observation, conversation with campus principals, the pyramids, whatever, are there any holes? Is there anything, you know, that we need to be looking at? Is there anything that we're lacking? Is there any new protocols we need to put in place? How is that, how is that whole ordeal going? And is there any, anything we need to be aware of as far as what we may need to be doing here in the, very soon to try to make sure everyone still has all they need? Or if we need to switch anything up, anyway?
So, Trustee Phillips, we actually created an email that our campuses can do direct requests for any PPE. And they don't have to do a specific order like we usually do through our system. This is just for PPE that goes directly to our warehouse. So they, any employee can walk up and they can say, you know, I feel like I need another box of disposal mask and the campus feels like they don't have enough or they need some. That email goes directly and it's something that, of course, has immediate attention. That's why we set a whole different system up to it. We are currently working on gathering our order to finish out the second semester. We have, of course, inventory in our warehouse. We don't want to, we want to make sure we have plenty. So you'll see in the future coming before the board additional PPE. But I like what you're saying, so let's communicate, let's ask the staff. Let's take this time before winter break. What do you feel like you need more of? So when we get back in January after the holidays, every room is ready to receive our staff and our students with appropriate PPE. So great suggestion, and we'll put that in place.
That's it for me, President Ramos. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Trustee Dohr.
Thank you, President Ramos. Just real quickly, as I have visited campuses this past, principals, they have been very complimentary of the process in place to request PPE, but also with the expediency that the order is turned around and the PPE is delivered to the campus. So I wanted to say thank you and commend you on the efficiency of that process. So thank you.
Dr. Scribner, it looks like that's all the questions or comments on this presentation.
Thank you very much, President Ramos. So our final report is a comprehensive report, Lone Star Governance Goals on Early Literacy and Early Math. Many of you have seen in the national news reporting a common theme that the COVID impact has been significant on our learners, particularly in our large urban districts. The lost learning time is really showing up in our preliminary assessments. So at this time, Doctors Penyon, Washington, Mr. Moore, as well as our Associate Superintendent for Assessment and Data Quality, Sarah Arispe, will take us through our next presentation. So I'll turn it over to you, Sarah.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. Want to start off with our scheduled Goal 2 presentation for Lone Star Governance, which was our update on early grades map. And just as a reminder, that that goal is for us to move from 34% to 45%. And on the next slide, we see that goal broken down by student groups. And I've highlighted the 2021 goals for you to find easily. And under that goal, we have some goal progress measures. So goal progress measure number two refers to our CIRCLE and TEKS KIA, which is the Texas Kindergarten Entry Assessment. And we want to see those early learners raising the number on track from 83% to 88%. And you'll see that broken down by student group and the 2021 goals are highlighted here. So let's look at what we can related to goal progress measure 2.1. Looking at CIRCLE first, this is an assessment that our pre-K students take three times a year. Part of that assessment is observation by the teacher. The other part is actual tasks that the students complete with the teacher. And this includes both our virtual and our in-person learners. So this is combined with both. Now here you'll notice that we actually see a one-point gain from 2019 fall to 2020 fall, which is great. You also notice I've got the number tested there, so not unexpected, but we do have some decrease in the number of students tested there in pre-K. Now we'll look at that same information by student group. And you'll see that we have a nice little three-point game for Hispanic, a large 10-point game for our English learners, and then some slight decreases in the other student groups in that for 50% on track. We also want to look at our TEKS KIA data, that's the kindergarten entry. Here we see a six-point decrease. And this is where we start to see some of the impact of unfinished learners. These are students in kindergarten who were pre-K students in spring of 2020 and did not finish in school last year. So we see that decrease from 42% to 36%. Again, a slight decrease in the number of students tested this year in kindergarten. And the next slide shows us those same students in kindergarten by student group. And you'll see that there are fairly consistent decreases across our main student groups with a little larger decrease for our white students. Again, we believe this is the impact of unfinished learning and we'll be continuing to monitor this and report back to the board on progress throughout the year. Our second goal progress measure for mathematics is MAP growth. Here, here's the progress measure and the goal from going from 61% to 71% of third-grade students meeting or exceeding growth on the MAP growth assessment. And the next slide shows us that. And the next slide shows us that same information by student group with a goal for each student group for 2021 and highlighted there in green. So, right now, we have just finished our beginning of year about a few weeks ago, before Thanksgiving, our beginning of year MAP assessment for mathematics. And the red bars that you see here are the national norms. So, we're comparing how our students did to the national norms on their RIT score. Uh, RIT is simply the name of the scoring units for our MAP testing. So, you could think of, they use RIT just like we would use inches if we were measuring the student's height. And wanna look at that now on the next slide compared to last year. So, we have this year in the blue bar, we have last year in the yellow bar, and we kept the national norms on there. You'll see a little variation there in that mean RIT score. Uh, grade one and grade eight are actually a little higher than they were last year. You do not see a bar last year for kindergarten because we just added kindergarten to MAP this year. And I wanna point out that kindergarten is the only area where you see, um, our students performing above the national norm. Just a reminder that our kid, our kindergartners for this fall administration, some tested at home and some tested at school. And yet, all of you that are parents, if you had a five-year-old taking a test online from home and they were struggling, you might be tempted to help them out a little bit. And so, we're not sure if, uh, if that's a factor or not. We are most grateful for our parents for helping those young learners get on and engage with learning. So, we'll be watching that, and teachers are aware that, um, there may be some, uh, poor differences that they wouldn't have seen had all kids been tested in the classroom. Uh, next, let's look at Goal Two Point Two, Goal Progress Measure Two Point Two. This is MAP again, but now we wanna look at the present, the percent projected to be at the MEETS grade level on STAR. So, our MAP data is used to project forward to spring STAR. Remembering that we're at the beginning of year now, and our board goal is set at the MEETS level. So, students can pass the STAR test at approaches, but we want them performing at that higher MEETS grade level standard. So, the next slide is gonna show us that those projections for STAR 2021 uh, compared to what our projections were last year at beginning of year. The gold bar is the 2019 projected, uh, to spring 2020. The blue bar is fall twenty, right now, projected to spring 21. And you will notice that we are projecting fewer students would pass STAR at the MEETS grade level. Uh, the only place where we don't see a decrease is third grade, which remained the same at eighteen. Again, we believe that this may be some of the impact of unfinished learning um, due to our COVID closure. And we will be monitoring that. Remember that we also have a middle-of-the-year assessment for these same students. So, we'll be looking for growth and looking for any changes in those projections as we know that both our students and our teachers are working very hard to make sure all students are learning. Next slide shows us those, um, projection differences by student group. And so, you see each student group is projected less than, uh, 2019. The, the least change is in African-American, and that's our group with the lowest performance. So, that's when we are, even though it's a slight change, we're really working to move that up with that group of students, as with all of our students. And next, we'll look at the other student groups, economic disadvantage, our English learners. And you'll see the only one that had a slight gain, one point, was special ed. So, we're, we're pleased with that for those students with disabilities. As you're looking at these, you may be thinking, while our goals, your goals as a board remain the same, and then looking at almost a new baseline of where our data is starting, we're gonna just double down our efforts to meet those goals. But our data itself, we're starting from a place that is much different than we started from in previous years. And finally, Goal Progress Measure Two Point Three is MAP growth in kindergarten. This is our baseline year, as I said. We just added kindergarten to our MAP testing this year. So, we'll, uh, I gave you a little bit of information on the previous slides, but we'll set some targets there after this school year. That was our update on math. And we really had early literacy update for Goal One scheduled in January, but we have beginning-of-year data now, and so we knew the board would be anxious to see it, um, now rather than waiting until January. So, Goal One is our goal around the percent of third grade students who meet grade level on STAR, moving from thirty-four to forty-seven percent. The next slide shows that grade, uh, level data broken down with targets for each student group for 2021. Those are our targets. The goal progress measures for Goal One, um, include, again, circle for our pre-K kids, and we wanna be sure that they are on track and, and moving up in the percent of kids who are on track based on phonological awareness, which is a foundation for later success in third grade. Next slide shows circle is our pre-K assessment. So, let's look, it's given in both Spanish and English. And this shows a comparison of this fall 2019 with last pre-K student, so, uh, very excited about that and wanna keep those gains going. Let's look at the next slide, and that will break down the English phonological awareness in circle by student group. And you can see the gains for each student group. The only group that had a decrease was our English learners testing in English, and they were down three points from the prior year. And we do not have TECSKIA as one of the goals because kindergartners are participating now in MAP growth, but I wanna bring you that additional information to just balance out with our mathematics. So, um, on track for phonological awareness in TECSKIA, much like math, we have decreases here. Again, these are our students that were pre-K students in spring of 2020 and may have unfinished learning from last spring. And we see a large decrease in phonological awareness in the group, uh, tested in English. Slight increase in Spanish, that is less student, but it's a, a great increase for those students. And this is an area that we will definitely be watching and anxious to report to you at middle of year and give you an update to let you know how those gaps are closing. Same information on this slide with English broken down by student group, and you can see that the differences there by race, ethnicity. The largest decline was in our African-American students at thirty-four points, Hispanic twenty-six, and English learners tested in English is twenty-six also. And the last thing I wanted to share with you, though, a bit of encouragement on TECSKIA. We see that while the students are performing lower, there is still a huge benefit to our students in kindergarten who attended Fort Worth ISD pre-K versus those who did not. It's a twenty-point difference. So, uh, that, this tells us that students are benefiting from our Fort Worth ISD pre-K and the impact of assessment. And then we have the MAP reading and the MAP math, which look at growth. So, this is MAP fluency, um, and we have targets there to move from thirty-nine to forty-nine percent. Last year was the first year we used this assessment. Next slide shows that same information broken down by student group. And so, let's look at our beginning-of-year measure. And we actually had higher percentages of students who meet or exceeded the standard for grades K one and two when compared to last year, 2019. And the only slight decrease was that third grade. And I also wanna call out to you first grade. It looks like, wow, why is that bar so much lower than the others? First grade is when that assessment changes to primarily looking at phonological awareness and foundational skills to actual oral reading. So, at beginning of year, our first graders are, are not as high as they might have been in kindergarten. Also, we're tracking this toward an end-of-year goal, so we would not expect all those students to be on track for the end of the year at the beginning, and we will see gains in that for middle-of-year and end-of-year. So, we will, I'll call those out to you when, uh, when we look at it again at middle-of-year. Uh, next slide is that same information by student group. And you see, most of the groups had at least a couple of points increased. A slight decrease with our Hispanic students was four points there when compared to the prior year, beginning of year. And again, tracking toward the end-of-year goal. And then finally, we have Goal Progress One Point Three, which is MAP growth reading, which we began this year. And so, uh, we don't have the target set yet. Uh, this will be our baseline year, but we're gonna go ahead and report our progress on that so that you can see how students are moving. So, um, let's look again at our mean RIT score. And RIT's just a scale, it's an equal interval scale that, that starts, uh, down in kindergarten and keeps moving up. And those are each of our mean scores. On the next slide, let's compare those to the national norms. You'll see a similar pattern where, as a large urban district, we run a little bit below the national norms. This is comparable to our colleagues in Council of Great City Schools. Uh, a number of large urban districts, as well as some suburban and rural districts, use MAP, but we, we tend to see that as a pattern. Also, call out that same pattern with kindergarten being a little above the national norm. And so, we're looking forward to seeing if that continues. I'm very hopeful about that. Also, wanna tell you that these, the norms for MAP reading growth, um, are set in English. There are not currently national norms available for Spanish. So, we're reporting just the English to you, although there is a Spanish test. It only has user norms. And just to call that out, they're working on getting enough data to set some national norms, and we're a part of that along with many of our colleagues in the urban district nationwide. The next slide shows us the percent of students projected to be at MEETS grade level compared to STAR of 2019. So, if you look at the blue bar, that's this beginning-of-year data, and we're using it to project about what percent of students would be at MEETS grade level based on current data in the spring compared to our actual 2019 STAR data, which is the red bar. So, um, you can see that even with based on projections, we are lower that we talked about earlier. And we will get an update of these projections based on students' middle-of-year scores. So, we can see how the learning from when we started school until when we test in January has impacted that and, uh, projected closer to the time that we do our STAR test. The next slide shows those same data. So, the red bar is our actual group performance, uh, in 2019, the last time we took STAR, because we didn't have the twenty, the spring twenty test. And then the blue bars, again, for the groups, are the beginning-of-year performance projection. All right, um, I wanna shift gears a little bit, and, um, that was what we had for you on your board goals. And I wanna switch to an update on the impact of COVID on student learning. We saw a little bit of that in the board goals, but I wanna share with you some of our information from NWA. So, this slide is not real large, but I think most of you have seen it. Um, in the spring, NWA produced some projections about how the impact of school closures might impact either the COVID slide or, uh, COVID slowdown, they called it, in both mathematics and reading with a greater impact expected in mathematics. And, uh, you, they views, they simply weren't able to attend in person or virtual. So, the gaps depicted may be greater than we, uh, we see on these slides. The next slide, um, also provided by NWA, uh, a reminder that this impacts students at all grades and all student groups. And there are two things going on here. One is unfinished learning. So, learning due to the closure and districts getting back up, pivoting to online learning last year, there may be unfinished pockets of learning for any student. Then we have students that within their grade level may have some gaps in learning. And we've got kids kind of in that cross. They had unfinished learning and they had gaps. Uh, the, the only thing that I have seen that is very close to this, uh, because we've obviously never had this before nationwide, is the, the shutdown and the impact on children from Hurricane Katrina. And, um, you'll all remember that where some students just didn't go back, others went to other districts. The research on that, that is very firm, that, um, students took from two to four years for most students to make up that unfinished learning. Because as they went back in school, they had to continue with that grade level and then get the unfinished learning added in along with that. So, some really strong acceleration plans in place. Next slide, uh, from NWA shows us kind of how they're filling in the gaps and how they made those projections. So, we tested in the winter of 2019, fall of 2019 and winter. Spring was kind of a question mark. No one nationwide almost could test. In the fall, our question was, how are Fort Worth ISD students? Again, we skipped over a long period of time, so we're kind of resetting where we're working from with these beginning-of-year data. We'll test again in winter of twenty and in spring of 2021 and start tightening down on those numbers. Uh, on the next slide, before I talk about the, the last few pieces, I wanna be sure as I'm saying these things, I'm not using education terms randomly. Uh, so, achievement, when we look at achievement, we know that we're comparing how a student performs at a given point in time on a tested subject to either the standard or to their grade-level peers. And so, NWA, um, as used by all of the large urbans, it's a national norm reference test. And so, we're comparing to millions of students that have same grade and age nationwide. For STAR, we're comparing to a grade-level standard. When we talk about growth in a certain subject area, we're talking about growth relative to other students, given a normal school, school experience. And we certainly understand that what we're doing right now is not a normal school experience. And so, thinking about those and what this means when we talk about that average performance, uh, and average growth. We all remember our old bell curve. Uh, right there in the middle is average performance, and that's higher there because most students fall in the middle in, in the average. We have low performance on the left and high performance on the right tail. And again, most of the students are right there in the middle of that for average performance. We can also look on the next slide at growth norms using that same curve. So, average growth is what most students would expect, given a year in school experience. So, a year of learning for a year in school. So, we have average growth right there in the middle, less than expected, which we definitely don't want for students on the left tail, and then more than expected on the right tail. And again, with that average in the middle. So, if we think about how growth and achievement are related, we have a student at a current achievement level, whatever that achievement level may be. If they get an average year of growth, they'll stay at that achievement level or maintain that for the next year. If they get more than expected growth, their achievement level goes up. If they get less, of course, their achievement level goes down.
Got it.
Uh, NWA sets these based on over ten million students in the norm sample. So, we feel very confident, and we've seen these projections be very accurate for Fort Worth ISD students as well. So, let's look at two different student examples. If I am a student that is at the ninetieth percentile, uh, and I get a year's worth of growth for a year's worth of learning, that's average, then I should expect the next year that I'm gonna be at the ninetieth percentile again. However, if I'm a student, and we may be good with that, may, ninetieth percentile is very high, and we wanna maintain our high, high-performing learners. But if I'm at the thirtieth percentile, and I get a year's worth of growth for a year in school, the next year, I'm still at the thirtieth percentile. So, in order for me to ever catch up to average, I have to gain more than a year's worth in a year of schooling. And that leads us into these last couple of slides from NWA. And they call this the COVID impact slide, and these are our Fort Worth ISD data. So, it's comparing students at a grade level in mathematics from fall nineteen So it's comparing students at a grade level in mathematics from fall 19 to fall 2020. You can see the totals down there at the bottom of students that had both a 19 and a 20 score. About 5% of students maintained their performance level. So if they were at a 90, they're still at a 90. If they're at 30, they're still at a 30. 40% of our students, and we may not have expected this increase despite the COVID impact, which is great, and we want to continue to accelerate those. What I want to look more at is the 55% who decreased, meaning that they did not maintain or go up, they went down. As we look at that 55%, this is broken out by student group. I included this just so that you could see that there wasn't by a point or so much different in student group. And to the next slide, here's that 55%. That represents 15,000 students in Fort Worth ISD who decreased in achievement. This slide, NWA called COVID recovery. What they're, we're looking at now is what will it take from fall 2020 to spring 21 for those students who decreased to get back to where they were in achievement level? Well, 5% of the students just having an average year to be able to do that. Another 11%, as outlined there in green, with good solid tier one instruction and appropriate scaffolds should also be able to make back where they were. Another 7% highlighted here in yellow with a stretch goal and really working hard with our very best teachers may also be able to recover by spring of 2021. 77% of our students who had a decrease are going to need multiple years with our strongest teachers in order to gain back that achievement level because of the COVID impact, based on our NWA data. And these are patterns we have seen. They're consistent with that analogy to Katrina. And it's similar to what you're seeing reported in the news and from our other large urban peers at the council, as well as in Texas. And this next slide will show you that, again, there aren't huge differences by student group there in how those, how those shake out compared to the total. So let's go back to our bell curve. If average growth is there in the middle, we have that green group of students that we should reasonably expect to make it back to where they were pre-COVID. We have a stretch goal for this next group of yellow students. They should be able to make it this year with solid tier one instruction with our very best teachers and all the supports and scaffolds they need. And then we have that group in the red who we need a multi-year plan to ensure that those students not only get back to where they were, but exceed where they were in achievement level. And on this final slide from NWA, this is their recommendations to districts nationwide after seeing these sobering data and that we've discussed with the council, we've discussed with large urbans nationwide and our peers in Texas, that we need to reset and identify each student's starting point. So using these beginning of year data, principals and teachers are doing that now. Then we need to respond by maximizing our instructional time for those students and make sure that they get every minute focused and on target. We need to set realistic student and school goals. NWA has been really advocating for this because that group of students in the red, if we set goals that are unattainable, it's very defeating to teachers and to students. So we need to let them have the time they need while not taking our foot off the gas. And then finally, we want to reinforce by driving growth for all students, even those that are not in the red, obviously, with quality tier one instruction and the student supports that they need. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moore, Dr. Washington, and Dr. Pena to talk about the supports that are already in place and those that are planned. Mr. Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Risping. Or to say the least, there's a great deal of vital data in this evening's presentation. But with stark realization of what this loss of learning opportunity has done, not just for the students of Fort Worth ISD, but the students of our nation. We, this evening, we didn't want to bring this presentation to you and, and just represent the data that's in front of us. We wanted to come to you with our, our plan, our action, how we're going to respond to this COVID slide that our students have experienced. The next part of this presentation, Dr. Pena, Dr. Washington, and I would like to identify for you our district support goal priorities that we've established that are going to respond to the COVID experience our students have. I will tell you, I feel like we're fortunate here in Fort Worth ISD. I say we're fortunate because pre-COVID, if you will remember, we started a shift in our instructional training. As a part of our Lone Star Governance work, this board supported a reorganization that we moved forward, both in student school support and the academics division. A reorganization that put a focus on high-quality, daily, grade-level, challenging tier one instruction as the driver for what's going to make a difference for students, for what's going to get us the academic outcomes that we want for the students of Fort Worth ISD. If this COVID time has told us, has taught us anything, it's taught us that that focus, that work is the right work. And that is the area that we must continue to focus on. The multi-year approach of how we ensure that all students are exposed to high-quality, daily, grade-level, challenging instruction is the only way that we're going to get our students to recoup the losses they've experienced. Students nationwide have experienced throughout this COVID time. As you will see on this slide, we have five areas that we would like to share with you today that relate to our district support and goal priority. We're going to share with you, work around our instructional and literacy frameworks. We'd like to share with you adjustments that we're going to make to the areas within our professional learning plan for our teachers and staff. We'd also like to talk to you about some adjustments we're making to our district assessment plan, how we're connecting our international global norms, differentiated supports we're providing to our campuses that are aligned with our school performance framework and supporting our, our campuses of greatest need. And then also a focus that we are establishing on campus-based instructional leadership. I'd like to start off by, by sharing Fort Worth ISD instructional framework and literacy framework. These are the two instructional priorities we have launched this year. And I said two instructional priorities because those are the only priorities we are focused on. We have purposefully narrowed our focus and aligned our campus support and our resources so that all students and all teachers can benefit from a pinpointed attention to improving quality instruction in all content areas and specifically our instruction in our literacy block. These priorities support three essential shifts that we have to have established in Fort Worth ISD for our students to achieve at the levels to respond to this COVID experience. One, it focuses our instructional time. It makes sure that teachers have the adequate time in front of their students at which they can work effectively. It focuses on quality instruction, quality curriculum for our, for our students. And it also focuses on quality instruction, how we've defined what instruction looks like in Fort Worth ISD. The group check these documents with the board previous to this presentation. I'll encourage you to take a look at those and feel free to reach out if you have any questions or would like to go more in depth. On this next, on this next slide, I would like to, to start off and look at a couple of components in our instructional framework. For those of you who are with us back in 2016, I'd like for this board to remember a process we began called Innovative Learning for Our Future. Part of the master planning work that we did for Fort Worth ISD. We brought a, a, a community-focused group together, a large community-focused group that identified our highest hopes of learners in Fort Worth ISD and also identified what our learner expectation. Dr. Sorenson, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and her team took this work that was spread back in 2016 and expanded this work to identify a common definition of what teaching and learning look like in Fort Worth ISD. Two areas of the instructional framework I'd like to talk with you about today are classroom and school culture and our lesson structure. Here on this page, you will see our, our, our purpose and goal around our classroom and school culture is to provide a culture in our schools and classrooms that foster a safe environment for students to excel and achieve at high level. We know if students are going to be exposed to quality daily instruction that is challenging that we have to have an environment in which students can learn. That classroom environment needs to be safe and orderly so that, so that the students can learn, that all students can learn in our classrooms. We want to build classroom communities and that foster student social and emotional development. Our experience can't just be academic. It has to be support for the whole student, social, emotional, and overall student development in our classroom. We're supporting our teachers to provide an equitable learning environment for all students, a classroom environment that establishes a community with high academic expectation, grade-level, challenging instruction in which all students can be successful, and doing all of this in an environment that is a culturally responsive classroom, a classroom where students can see themselves in their learning and a classroom in which their learning reflects the students that are in each of our classes. On the next slide, we will share with you information around our lesson structure, an integral part of our instructional framework. This defines our definition of high-quality instruction in Fort Worth ISD. I think you all know I've been around Fort Worth ISD for a number of years. My experience, this is the first time, and I think we have defined one common definition of what quality instruction looks like in Fort Worth ISD. You know, instruction is subjective. Quality instruction is defined by the person who sees it. What we wanted to do in Fort Worth ISD is to align what our expectations were, to align what we're supporting in the classroom. The common definition allows us to align not only our professional learning, but our campus supports and our instructional planning and development. So we're bringing all teachers and students back to one structure of support so that we can make what's happening in our classroom is getting the results that we want for our students. I welcome an opportunity to share more of our instructional framework with you if you'd be interested as we move. Like, we'd like to touch base on our literacy framework as well. Our literacy framework is not just a foundational framework. It's a framework that spans from elementary all the way to our secondary education. This piece, the fundamental four, speaks to our foundation, the literacy work, the work that we're doing in our elementary classrooms specifically. Our literacy framework identifies the four fundamental components of a literacy block. A definition that says, in a literacy classroom, in any school, on any day, this is what you should see happening. This is what our teachers are working towards implementing and providing for quality student experiences. You'll see here, the first component of our, of our fundamental four is knowledge of words and word. Simply stated, this is a phonics block. This is an opportunity for students to engage in phonics instruction and phonological awareness, that letter-sound correlation that helps all of our students become better readers at an early age. The second component supports oral reading fluency of our students, providing our students the opportunity to read out loud, the opportunity to practice their reading to become more accurate in their reading, to have greater automaticity and to have greater proficiency so that they're actually reading like readers in their classroom. The first fundamental four component that we have is, is work on student comprehension of their reading on a daily basis. We want students to know what they're reading and know reading and be able to tell us what they've actually learned from texts that they're reading. Yeah, just be able to call words. We have to make sure that students are able to understand the information that they're getting from the text. And then our final component that we expect to see on a daily basis is a connected writing block, an experience where our students are not writing in isolation, but an experience where our students are actually writing about what they've read, where writing is not disconnected from what the reading is, it's all connected together and students are experiencing writing on a daily basis. For the secondary level of support for our literacy framework, we talk about disciplinary literacy. This very literacy component of our framework provides support for our middle and high school level students and teachers. Which people have heard the saying, all teachers should be teachers of reading. But we believe that. However, we believe that all teachers need to be teaching literacy within their content area. The disciplinary literacy framework provides guidance, reading, writing, and thinking in any content area in Fort Worth ISD. It's grounded in recent-based disciplinary literacy practice, and it targets those higher-order reading, writing, and thinking skills that students need to be college and career-ready. Simply stated, in a math classroom, we're teaching the literacy elements in the math content area that allows students to be thinking like a mathematician. In science, it provides the, the, the skills and terminology that students need to know to be thinking like a scientist. The next area of focus that we feel like is essential to improve our student outcomes is professional learning. It's great to have a plan in place, but the importance is being able to implement the plan. And the way we implement the plan is to make sure we have strong professional learning structures in place. I'd like to share two professional learning priorities that we feel will support a focus on improving high-quality, grade-level, challenging instruction. First is our reading academy. I, I think you all are aware that back at, at the 86th legislative session, House Bill 3 was passed that established a state requirement for school districts and a high-quality literacy achievement academy all across the state of Texas. Here in Fort Worth ISD, our reading academies are, are, are delivered by Fort Worth ISD staff. We are an authorized provider. We have, we have staff full-time and, and staff across the district that work with our Fort Worth ISD teachers seamlessly aligned to our, to our literacy framework so that we can support our teachers to learn, what does it, what does it mean to teach reading in Fort Worth ISD and how do I gain the skills to implement in my class? Our, our reading academies are not just for our teachers. Our reading academies are for all staff that interact with K through 3 students. So any teacher that works with a kindergarten through third grade student or any campus administrator that works in a K through 3 environment are required to go through our literacy academies and develop their skills to become a more effective literacy instructor. We prioritize the implementation of our literacy academies. This year, we have our, our tier three, four, and five campuses, our highest needs campuses that are going through our literacy training. We recognize that this is a very busy year for our teachers. We know that there are a lot on our teachers' plate. So we've worked hard internally, as well as with our community partners, to provide a stipend to our teachers, to incentivize our teachers and our campuses with greatest need to complete their reading academies this year. And we'll finish up the cycle of implementation with tier one and two campuses in the 21, 22 school year. All of our campuses will be completed with a reading academy by the end of school year 21. The next area, that's in our professional learning plan that I'd like to identify for our faculty. I think all of you have heard about our flex day plans. We've, we've had 30 hours of summer flex professional learning that we've had for our teachers over the last two years. This past year, I, we had to make a minor adjustment to our plans as virtual learning came in and we had to make some adjustments to providing that training to our teachers. We've been very supportive of getting training completed over the summertime so that teachers could implement this work in their classroom this school year. However, we're looking at a little bit of an adjustment moving forward. We're looking at breaking up the 30 hours of professional learning into three different buckets. One bucket of summer training where we are expecting, where, where we're supporting teachers to get that training in the summertime so they can implement during the school year in their content area, but in areas that, that they work with their principal to identify as priorities for the teacher, him or herself. Another 10 hours will be used throughout the year to provide training on district priorities. We're not asking additional time of our teachers. We can do some of this flex time that we have built up throughout the year so teachers can continue their learning throughout the year. And then a final 10 hours that will be principal-directed, priorities that address the campus needs, whether it be collaboration between teachers, lesson planning, or practice, to give the campus the opportunity to identify the areas of greatest need at the campus. I believe that takes us to our assessment plan. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Pena to.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. As alluded to earlier, we've had a shift in practice in developing our assessment focus for the school year. There was an intentional redesign on reducing the amount of assessments and focusing on this assessment data to inform instruction and, and student learning. As such, our assessment plan is now tightly aligned to nationally norm standards versus our district-created common assessments. As such, a heightened focus has been placed on utilizing student data and district curriculum to inform instruction. This process aligns well with our district curriculum and our instructional framework. In addition, we're using NWA data to inform fluency and comprehension. In addition, we're using NWA data to inform fluency and comprehension. And aligns well with our four fundamental practices within the literacy framework just described by Mr. Moore. Similarly, we're using our NWA data and math to inform instructional practice. Next slide. Thanks to the realignment of the school boundaries and pyramids approved by the board. We have realigned our school pyramids to streamline instructional programming and support. One such high-impact strategy is the reallocation of district personnel to support campus needs based on our school performance framework. For example, we have prioritized and appropriated instructional coaches at our highest need campuses. Another example is that Tier Four and Five campuses have an additional, about an additional hundred and fifty personnel to support with instructional coaching, student interventions, social-emotional learning, and student attendance. As Mr. Moore mentioned, our reading academy training will be completed around year twenty-twenty-two. In the meanwhile, student and school support and academics are working jointly together to provide differentiated support to our campuses as follows. Tier Four and Five schools have already met with both departments to discuss their campus-specific plans and articulate any other critical support that may be needed. Similarly, Tier Two and Three schools have instructional teams observing the implementation of our district's curriculum and its frameworks at each campus. After each visit, these instructional teams meet with the principal and the campus teams to discuss any trends observed and potential additional support that may be needed. As mentioned earlier, our main focus is to provide support with increasing Tier One instruction in every classroom in Fort Worth ISD. Thanks to our board's commitment with the redesign of academics and student and school support, this opportunity is now a reality. In the midst of our COVID and gaps in learning as a result of COVID. We have channeled funds to provide additional support for our campuses, such as PathBlazer, MyPath, and Lexia. These are student software programs specifically designed to provide individualized differentiated support based on specific student need. Ongoing training is being provided to our campus leaders, our instructional staff, and teachers to ensure that these interventions are implemented with fidelity. As we continue to support our kids academically, we know with the impact of COVID. They also need support with their social-emotional learning in a safe and supportive environment. As such, Panorama provides teachers and schools with additional tools and resources to provide additional lesson plans and additional resources to support kids with these challenges. We're truly excited to see the impact that these tools have on our kids and our campuses as we move forward. Dr. Washington?
Thank you, Dr. Pena. As mentioned before, professional learning is a top priority and key to our student success. This year, we've been very intentional about including instructional leadership teams at all of our professional learnings provided to principals so that we have campus teams that are trained and are able to assist with implementation and learning. Instructional leadership teams include our principals, assistant principals, data analysts, and instructional coaches. But we've also asked principals to identify lead content teachers and teacher leaders who support teams of teachers and are able to support with implementation. Our campus-based professional learning teams are also specific to the needs of individual campuses. I believe you heard earlier, Mr. Moore identified ten hours of flex time. Where teachers are able to provide ongoing learning that supports their own professional growth. This also provides opportunity for a teacher to teach peer sessions with input from the campus staff. And then based on the trends from campus walks and observations. Feedback can drive professional learning again, specific to individual campus needs. Finally, we have our professional learning communities that are specific set times on each campus. They allow for teachers to collaborate on lesson design. Teachers can also take opportunities to practice lesson delivery and get feedback from peers. PLCs also allow teams time to review data, such as the math data that was shared earlier. And also to respond to data that will plan and support campuses. Such as college and career and community data, college career and CCMR data, discuss campus climate and culture opportunities, and when needed, provide one-on-one small group support for individual students. Supporting and re-engaging students also is an ongoing top priority. I believe you saw the numbers of students in our previous presentation. We have multiple strategies that are being utilized to support our students and parents and campuses. At the campus level, principals and teachers assigned are assigned to cohorts of students in which they track students that they see there's a need and a drop in participation. And in some cases, students have disengaged. Campuses have identified staff to conduct home visits. They make calls. They work to determine the why of the students missing. If it is because of family needs or technology or academics, they work with the family resource centers to provide specific resources for those students. Campuses also have a stay-at-school coordinator to support with re-engaging students. They work with these students as well in conducting home visits. They engage in team outreach activities with campuses, such as our district walks. To share information about registration, graduation, and campus initiatives. Stay-in-school coordinators also continue the work of addressing truancy concerns. And then they are also nationally certified in dropout prevention. They attend our restorative practice trainings, as well as they are trained in social-emotional supports. They also work along with our family resource centers to advocate for students and family needs. At the district level for support, and thanks to the board's approval of Panorama, as Dr. Moore, Pena mentioned. This is a platform to support students where we're able to measure the social-emotional and academic needs of students. Panorama allows us to capture the voice of our students and topics like diversity, belonging, and engagement in school. As campuses collect these datas, results will equip our school leaders and our teachers with a better understanding of the students' needs and their experiences. And it also provides SEO interventions that respond and additionally at the district level and with the addition of our newly formed Parent Partnership Department headed by Ms. Marta Fata, we've been able to engage families and community partners on multiple levels. Parents as teachers have partnered with Reed Fort Worth, and they've identified over three hundred of our pre-K no-shows. They've conducted porch visits to determine where students are being schooled and what additional supports are needed for our parents of our pre-K students. They've also partnered with the World Relief and Catholic Charities. We found that many of our students, that there is a need to assist our children who are in a refugee population. Where we found that they not only struggle with low attendance and grades, but also the language barriers. Including the language barrier of learning to use technology. Because of this department, they offer now after-school tutorial sessions have been established in the clubhouses at these locations. And they are supported by the parents as teachers. Additionally, and our previously established parent university just completed a four-week technology class serving parents in four schools in the Poly and Morningside communities. Which is a space that is heavily located with our, populated with our refugee students. To assist parents on utilizing technology and how to engage with their campuses. Understanding attendance and grades and being able to communicate with the campus principals and their teachers. We not only focus on the school day, but work with engaging students during the out-of-school time is critical as well. The Fort Worth After School Program consists of eighty Fort Worth After School sites that serves approximately a hundred students virtually and sixteen hundred students in person in grades three to twelve. Academic supports for students are offered Monday through Thursday and Sundays from six to eight PM. Teachers across the district have provided homework assistance and tutorials through their tele-teachers via Google Meets or Zooms. And they support approximately sixty students each session. This plan is working to extend in more high schools, and we look to support approximately three hundred high school students daily. That is our next step, and our team is working very diligently to implement that. Virtual programming for the Fort Worth After School includes fine arts, performing arts, health, wellness, yoga, cooking classes, and sports that's offered as well, Monday through Thursday from four-thirty to six PM. Finally, the Fort Worth After School Program serves approximately twenty-five hundred meals per day. And they not only serve students in the Fort Worth After School Program, they also serve the students even if they're not in the program. We understand this is, we still have a challenge to re-engage our students. But we are constantly working to modify our plans and strategies to reach as many kids as possible. This concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, everyone. Looking at first person with their hand up is Trustee Evans.
How about now? Okay. Thank you all very much for this very thorough report. And knowing this is going to take a multi-year approach to redress the decline we're seeing. Can we break down by school to determine the campuses with the most decline? And offer some sort of summer program? I know we're going to be working on the twenty-one, twenty-two budget soon. And now is the time to plan for how we're going to pay to finish this unfinished spending. And if a greater overall negative impact is in mathematics, could the summer programs be more math-focused? And knowing it's going to take, I think the data was seventy-seven percent of our students will take multiple years. What are our HR retention and recruitment efforts for these world-class math educators that we're going to need?
You are right about the seventy-seven percent, the seventy-seven percent as of the fifty-five percent that had a decline. Trustee Evans, and so just to get that out there. And we can tighten up those numbers as we get closer to the end of the year before summer by looking at our middle-of-year data, which we'll report back to the board in February. Mr. Moore, I know can answer about the plans for summer.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Trustee Evans, thank you for the question. A couple of thoughts I'd like to share with you right now. One, I think we need to recognize and remember that we started school late this year. So for this summer, we're going to be engaged in school through the middle of June at least. And so one of the things that we're working on right now from an academics perspective is what does school look like in the month of June? So while we have students captured, so we can really be focused on between that focus, that really is at those campuses that Yes. Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. So yes, we can look at information and data split up by campus, and we'll be glad to share that information with the board. I would like to summarize my points from the presentation. Just make sure we understand this multi-year approach has got to what are we doing on a daily instructional basis with our teachers? What are we doing to make sure our teachers are improving the quality of instruction that's delivered? That doesn't mean we're not going to have interventions in place for students. We're looking at the response to our map data through MyPath and PathBlazers. We're looking at literacy interventions through Lexia for elementary and secondary students. We will develop a COVID response plan for this coming year. And yes, we do need to look at what our summer programming looks like for our students over the next three, four years. But I want to make sure we don't fall into this category of going back and remediating our students. We have to accelerate our students. One of the biggest challenges our students have, and one of the things that we have to address if we want to get our students to the level they need to perform, is that we can't continue just to remediate. We have to expose our students to grade-level challenging instruction. They have to be exposed to grade-level standards. And we have to provide scaffolds and supports for students to get successful on these grade-level standards. That's going to be, that's going to be the only way we can combat this COVID slide. Yes, we will, and we'd be glad to bring more information about what our summer planning is. What does our COVID slide response look like more specifically? And give you campus-specific data. But I just want to share with the board, our main focus is going to have to stay on improving our quality of Tier One grade-level instruction.
And I think, I don't know if if Mr. Spears is on, but I know that we've held meetings with Mr. Spears from HR. Myself with some of the, many of the campuses where we've looked at data that are high need and the areas that they are struggling with staffing, as well as Ms. Breed with the lens of equity and how we're supporting our students' most need. We've held a couple of sessions, and that's ongoing in being proactive in staffing and looking at data trends where we know that those are areas and the subject areas where we're going to struggle to staff. So we're already have plans and work in putting a purpose and a plan in session to work on that.
Thank you all so much.
Next, we have Trustee Andar.
Thank you, President Ramos, and thank you, Mr. Moore, for reminding us that we are focusing on where the students are learning right now, not just on remediation. And that is what I've read regarding this situation that we all find ourselves in nationwide, is that to just focus on remediation would be detrimental to our students. So I'm glad to hear you say that. The MAP test appears to only go up through eighth grade. What, if anything, are we doing to better know where the learning loss is for our high school students? And how are we addressing that?
Certainly. We have a couple of different plans within our assessment, our district assessment plan as well. At the high school level, we're focused on our collegiate testing. So SAT, ACT, ESAT, as well as district benchmarks. We've tried to establish national norms for our district assessment, as well as state-released assessments. So that we can track periodically throughout the year the progress our students are making. We can share more information with the board about what our secondary assessment plan looks like moving forward. Knowing that we have to stay focused on, especially when we get into high school. On the content areas, on the classes our students are taking, on working with our students to be proficient in the classes that they're taking. And there are so many different pathways for students to engage in. But there's not one assessment that's really going to tell us, because students are so differentiated when they get to high school. But that college and career preparedness and readiness has to be a standard that we continue to work on and look at for all of our students. And then differentiating the supports we're providing to them within the course selections they have.
Thank you. It does get a little bit trickier when they get into high school. That is certainly true. With the adjustments that have been made for the flex time. When does this new plan kind of kick in, so to speak, or start? Because I know that some teachers have already gotten all of their flex time for this year. So when does this officially kind of kick off?
Yeah, that's a great question. We had a plan in place for this year's flex credit already, the thirty hours. And honestly, the vast majority of our teachers completed their training in the summertime. Just the three-bucket plan is an improvement that we're going to put in place for next school year.
The, I love seeing that there's some principal-directed professional learning that's incorporated. Because the principals are the ones that know their campuses best and know what the needs of their students are. So I appreciate you including that in there. Does that include things like campus retreats or full-day campus planning-type activities? Does it include that as well?
Well, I will add that we spoke earlier about the campus plans and the principals. That's one thing that we created instructional leadership team. Is they're able to work with their campus and design specifically what they need. And we are leaving that completely to principals to design that with their specific staff. If it is a retreat, if it's a specific, not retreat, I will say that given COVID. It may look more like grade levels of teachers and contents. Where we're providing substitutes so that they can have that professional time to do their planning. Professional planning or review data or look at how they're going to implement lessons. So that is at the campus level, specific to them. But those are also days that we've set aside for them to have the whole day. So that's worked into the schedule as well, as we look at waiver days and such that are scheduled throughout the year. But specific to each campus needs, that's not something we're trying to design district-wide. But that's left at the level of where the campus principal and their teams.
Mr. Andar, just to piggyback on that, we are being cautious of pullout days because of the substitute coverage, the lack of substitutes. And of course, the need to keep our teachers in front of our students. So in the past, we've been very, very just giving. And we appreciate the pullout days and the planning, and sometimes it's necessary to do that to move forward. But right now in the situation we're in, we're really watching any pullout. Because we're at a very, just at a scary point for impact for lack of substitute coverage. So we're being very creative when we can find time. So we're being very creative when we can find time from the plan. So, and they're, and they're doing it and the teachers are willing. And we really, we appreciate how much they're giving up in their PLC time to move forward with that.
I fully support that. I hear you and I think you're spot on. And I guess when I was thinking of that, I was also thinking more in terms of like back to school in the 2021. School year before school starts, before students return and the learning that campuses can do together at that time. So no, I applaud you for keeping those kids, those teachers in front of the students. Last question. With some of the new programs, the path blazers, my path, Lexia and panorama. I know that those are things that the board supported. And I think somebody has their mic open. And I can hear myself through the, thank you, sorry, I'm not sure who that was. So with the path blazer, my path, Lexi and panorama programs, those are, those are things that we've invested in as a school district. How are we soliciting teacher feedback regarding the implementation of these programs? And the information that they're getting from these programs in order to better provide instruction for students?
I can share with panorama, we are currently, we have that process open right now. They started on the 30th and it goes through the 18th. And it does solicit feedback from students and from teachers. So that's one avenue that we're utilizing. And principals are working with our campuses to share that information and ensure that they are engaging in that feedback with panorama. With the survey data.
So Mrs. Dard, if I can address more of the specific academic programming interventions, my path, path blazers and Lexia. We're actually building a cohort, a professional learning community around the implementation of Lexia specifically. So we're talking to our teachers that are in our structured literacy classes. That's, that's the group that's going to be providing the instruction at the middle school level. And also including the principals and some of our elementary teachers that will be utilizing the programming. Develop an implementation plan together instead of just saying this is how it will work. And so giving them the opportunity to develop the program along with this as we. When it comes to my path and path blazer, we started with an expectation of amount of time that students participate. You remember my path and plat path blazer is directly tied to map assessment. And it creates an online pathway for students to practice on the skills that they have deficits in as a result of their map assessments. We did not tell teachers how they had to do that. We did not say that had to happen in classroom time. Teachers can do that outside of the classroom. They can carve out 15 minutes a day in the classroom. We've given some flexibility for teachers to do that the way that it best makes sense in their class.
I appreciate you gathering that data. And I know that the data is not available now, but I would love to revisit this in six months or nine months. Not necessarily in, in some format, in some way, shape or form. To make sure that the money that we're investing is that we're seeing the returns. Because that is information that not only we need as a board, as we continue to approve future purchases regarding this or something else. But that's something that our community should have access to that, that what we're investing in as a district is actually we are, we are reaping the returns that we expect. And that students really are learning and that they really, these programs really are benefiting our students. So thank you very much.
Next, we have trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. I have four questions. The first one is what percentage of your plan involves or involved teacher input? And, and I guess also, what is your ongoing plan for input? Because we all know these plans are fluid and, and you have to make course correction.
Certainly. The, the, the core piece of our plan is built within our literacy framework and our instructional framework. And I'll take us back to the, the stakeholder group that we put together back in 2016. That created the foundation of this work that it was built on through our master planning process. And I don't remember the exact breakdown, but a vast majority of that group was, were, were teachers here in Fort Worth ISD. I can get you that group so that you can see how we split that group up as we created the priorities that we established for academics in Fort Worth ISD. And then the move forward piece of that is how do we continue to look at the implementation of our literacy and instructional frameworks? And get feedback on an ongoing basis? We, we're doing that now as we make campus walks and have conversations with principals and with teachers. We do that when we have community conversations. And we're building content specific trainings where it's not a specific training. It's an opportunity to invite teachers and give us feedback on how are things implemented? Is it being successful? What's not being successful and what are some adjustments to make? So we'll continue to have those opportunities throughout the coming year, this year and the coming years.
Great, thank you. We talked about the multi-year plan that, that there are students that are behind. It'd be great, as trustee Evans suggested, that we know which schools those are. But also what are the mobility rates? It's hugely important and we have to address that. And perhaps we need to rip a few attendance zones and open them up and, and run a bus in a 10 mile circle. It doesn't bother me what you all do, but we need to keep kids in the same school, especially after the insult of this slippery virus we call COVID. It's hurt kids and it's hurt families. And we're going to have to do something to slow mobility. And I understand it's a national problem, but we can do something to slow that down. Do we have any plans to address mobility any differently than we have prior?
Today, one of the things that's, that has probably been made mobility a little bit easier is being able to provide instruction. If a kid is at one school and they can still get and, and be engaged with their campuses and get that learning wherever they are. So I think being able to have virtual learning has actually helped support that.
And trustee Jackson, I would add also that our parent partnership office is under Martha Plata is really redesigning the work. As Dr. Washington alluded earlier. And the parents as teachers have already identified, made contact with 300 kids. That we had not been able to capture before. So I know we're, as we redesign that and have an update for you. You'll see an increased boots on the ground approach to capture kids and especially at our highest needs zones.
Great, thank you. And, and then when we identify children, especially pre K4, we're working so hard, so hard with, with early literacy and with our youth and engaging these families. When are we going to provide bus service for pre K4s? Because we're going to have to catch up. And we should be in a proactive mode. And I know we provided it at two locations. But do we have the capacity to cut something and deliver pre K4 transportation?
That sounds to me like that's something we're going to have to look into. Trustee Jackson, I know that with budgets being tight, we may, you're right. It, it may have to be in a situation in which we are looking at the opportunity cost and, and cutting parts of our budget to, to enhance others. But that certainly will be something that we can come back to the board with as we build our budget.
Thank you, Dr. Scrubner. And I would, would ask then too, we have a policy that says pre K4 cannot ride on a bus with kindergarteners and above. So perhaps we could look at that policy or see what other Ermonds are doing. Just a thought from the chief seat up there. Thank you guys so much and thank you for this presentation. You all are doing a yeoman's job, you know it. But I don't think that this board can thank you enough for what you do and for what our employees do. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. Next, we have trustee Ashley Paz.
Thank you, President Ramos. I have a few comments and a handful of questions, so I will try to keep them brief, but you know me by now. So I want to kind of reiterate or to support what trustee Evans had her, her questions about a summer, summer program. Believe it or not, I know it's going to be difficult. I spent quite a few summers in summer school. It is, you know, it, it was something that was very helpful for me growing up. And I know that we have summer, summer school programs. But I would love to see, you know, possibly some things that we could do to expand that for the next couple of years. As we're trying to help get our students caught up. And I know that this year is going to be even more difficult. But I know that, I know that that's something that y'all are looking into. That I'm, I'm really excited to hear, you know, if we can maybe use that opportunity. And then expanding on that. You know, I, when I was in high school, I spent every single summer in summer school. And then the year that I graduated or the year after I graduated, they changed and they made school year round. Man, I was already in school year round. So I thought it was just the most unfair thing ever. But it, I know that, you know, there are different theories on whether that works or not. And I know that we kind of, we kind of sort of looked at that over the summer, but it kind of died with the teacher survey. I would hope that we could maybe use this opportunity to re-explore that. You know, I won't be here in future school years. So, you know, it's not, I won't be part of that discussion. But I think that it's an opportu, as a district of innovation, we have an opportunity to do innovative things. And this is with the fluctuations in our calendar, you know, now might be the time to rip off the Band-Aid. But hopefully we can have that conversation in the future. And also, I love the, I love what you presented with the flex day redesign. I think it's really great to, sorry, pizza guy is here. I could never speak without having dogs go off in the background. I'm all over the place. But the flex day redesign, I think it's great to be able to fit the needs of the teacher, the needs of the campus and district priorities. This, this is wonderful and I hope that it's well received as well. So now we'll kind of turn to my questions and I'm going to go back to the beginning of the presentation with Sarah. So, you know, we, we talked, you, you talked about the map test and how some of our virtual learners might have gotten some help from home. I know that when my, my own daughter was taking the, or both of mine took the map test. But when my youngest was, was here taking it, she was in a full-on freak out. Until I sat down and explained to her, this is a benchmark, it's not a big deal. You can, you know, if you, you're not going to know all of the answers, you're not supposed to know all of the answers. And then she was fine. But I definitely wouldn't, wouldn't help her like she wanted me to. So then fast forward to today, when they take their, she took her benchmark. And I didn't come downstairs until 9:30 and was expecting her to be in the middle of taking her, taking her test. And she's, you know, sitting in the, in the kitchen, just playing around. I was like, what are you doing? She's like, oh, I finished it, we're done. So, you know, the, I think the, having the map gave her a lot less anxiety about the benchmark. So that was a great thing and I hope that that's the experience of other families as well. So the question that I have about the report that you gave us, Mr. Respey, is we, those numbers include both virtual and in-person students, correct? We're not?
Yes, they do.
Okay, okay. I figured I just needed to ask to make sure. So do we have the, like, what percentage of the students didn't take the test or incomplete? Or that we just didn't capture with the map test?
We can get that information for you, be happy to do that.
Okay. And, you know, the, so the reason I'm asking, I'm wondering if there are any, if there would be any anomalies. And I'm sure that this is something that you've looked at, just in student groups that possibly did not complete the map test. And if we have any student groups that had a higher percentage of incompletes or of not tested than others. And you don't, I don't need that answer right now, but I would be interested in knowing that for the future. And then finally, my last question for you. So I know that TEA is still saying, you know, we're, we're administering the star. And, you know, they still haven't told us whether or not they're going to actually count the star. If they're, you know, if we're going to be penalized for the star or how, what they're going to do with that data. But I'm, I'm glad that we're going to actually collect the information. So do you know how the star will be administered?
I do know that if we give the star, the expectation will be that it would be for students who tested on campus. And you, the board is aware that we're giving the December and of course this, this week, actually as we speak. We started today with our English one testers. And that is for students on campus, not punitive to a student that has a health concern and perhaps can't come on campus. We certainly understand that that may be the case for a few of our students. But schools have been doing a great job of planning a safe administration for all students who are able and want to come to campus. Where they're doing social distancing, using all teachers and putting less students in the room. And they're also working to separate our hybrid in-person students from virtual learners. He, who may not need to be mixed with the general population if they have a health concern. So they are very conscientious about that and being sure that they have all their PPE that Ms. Molinar talked about in stock and ready for both students and teachers to have a safe testing.
Great, thank you so much. And then I've got one last question and this is probably going to be for Jerry. So, and if it's not, then somebody else, whoever is best can chime in.
Sure.
So last year, when, or it was this year, when we had our, our team retreat at the women's club and we're discussing our priorities and all of that. You, there was a moment where you spoke very passionately about the need for our writing instruction. And how the literacy is, it, you know, we, we have focused on literacy, but we need to do better at focusing on writing. And, you know, I haven't really, if, if I've seen it, I've missed it. So I was, just because this is the kind, kind of the content for today. Where are we on writing instruction? And is that going to continue to be a priority moving forward with the, with this kind of shift in priorities?
Yes, ma'am, actually trustee Paz, thank you for that question. We are not going to waiver in, in our view that being connected between reading and writing is a, is a fundamental component of our literacy instruction. Yes, the way that we are establishing that work right now is incorporating daily writing instruction in our literacy blocks at all level. One of the things that I, I think I shared back at that retreat is the way that the state assessed writing. We almost waited till it was fourth grade to really start focusing on writing. And there's no way to recoup the learning that should have happened in those primary grades leading up to fourth grade. Our fundamental four with that establishment of writing being connected to their, the work they're doing in their reading block is really one of the first steps. We're redeveloping curriculum that supports that work. And all of our professional learning for our teachers around our fundamental four, around our literacy approach and our literacy framework. Is going to be establishing a focus on writing, daily writing instruction and building those writers every year, not just waiting for the years that they're tested.
Great, thank you so much. I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that about the fourth graders. I have a fourth grader and she can't write, so hopefully she'll, she'll catch on soon. Thank you all for all of your questions. This was a fantastic, very informative presentation. And I'm excited about the direction we're going.
Next, we have trustee Luabanos.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you for this report. I have a few questions on this report. And I want to second trustee Jackson and trustee CJ on the comments on how can we close the gap on the 77%? That it will take a few years to, to close, but a few years is too long. So if we can elaborate more besides summer school and what else can we do to, to close that 77% gap? And then on, on the reading. and then uh on, on the reading, so the, despite all the efforts by the nonprofits and the community, we are almost at fifty percent of our goal of uh having also great, alter grade students reading at grade level by twenty twenty-five. I believe it was so forty-nine percent. So what else should we be doing to have um, to achieve our goal that was back then to have always, all, all the ways reading by twenty twenty-five?
So, Mr. Luvenos, um, these questions are kind of at the heart of, of our plan. It, it's almost a shift in philosophy right now that we're talking about. Um, are we going to continue to put Band-Aids on our students and say, we'll see this incremental improvement every year? Or are we going to address the, the underlying issue, which is students every year have to be exposed to quality tier-one instruction? And I say tier-one instruction, that daily instruction on grade level that's challenging, that's high quality. That's the piece that's going to make the difference. That's the piece that's actually going to get us from a couple of points increase in our reading performance every year to actually getting these targets that we're looking for. If we want to get our students at the level of uh, of, of performance that they deserve to be at, we have to focus on what are we doing in the classroom? That's where we maximize time. Uh, we can't be wasting time in the classroom and having a teacher work with small groups of students and the majority of the students being in hitters where they're self-directed. We have to take advantage of our experts in our classroom, our teachers, and say the time that you have in front of the kids, we want you to be teaching. One of the reasons why we define this uh instructional framework, so we can say, what does teaching look like in your classroom? And so when we train, when we develop, when we support, it's all to this one common definition. And everyone in every classroom every day is providing this high-quality tier-one instruction. We'll continue to intervene uh and, and do programs that address individual needs, but that's not going to get us where we need to be. Only tier-one instruction is really going to get the end result.
Thank you. And then one more question. Um, we talked about it in, in previous years, we have programs in place, but some of those programs are only in English. So what are we doing for a Spanish-speaking uh student who uh is taking too long for the students to um, to be in those programs that are only specific addressed for the ones uh that can speak English? So I feel like we're not doing enough to, for this uh Spanish-speaking students. Uh, because we, I asked this question a few years ago and here we are, twenty twenty, and we still haven't addressed the program and that need to, to have a program for the students that speak Spanish and not only pre-K, first grade, second grade uh students.
Yeah, so um, I, I want to show you a copy of this document. Um, this is our literacy framework and it says literacy and bilingual framework. And we called it out specifically because we have changed our dual-language model. We've moved to more of a fifty-fifty model for our students. Where no longer are we trying to deliver instruction in English and to deliver the same instruction in Spanish, so kids get the experience in both languages. What we're saying is building students that are fluent in both of their languages, that can learn in both languages. Our interventions that we have in place, if there's an intervention in English, our students are doing that intervention during their English block. So regardless of the language that you speak, the expectations in your, in your reading block and the work that you're doing is going to be the same. You learn some content in English, you learn other content in your home language, and then we bridge that learning so that it doesn't matter which language you're learning in, you're benefiting from the content in both languages. It's a shift from a bilingual model to a biliteracy model. And that's really the focus and the support we're providing to our teachers, changing that whole dual-language model altogether. I think you'll start to see some positive results as we move forward in this literacy framework that are really going to get the results that you're speaking.
Right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next we have trustee Brookins.
Okay, trustee of Jackson actually asked part of my question, but the, the front part of the question was knowing what we know now about the low enrollment and participation for our pre-K. Um, what is our action plan to increase uh participation um and enrollment? Uh, especially for our um, our underserved um black and brown students? Um, and is part of the plan to um work with childcare agencies, nonprofits and even churches?
Uh, trustee Brookins, um, I, I know we've been working with uh Barbara Griffith uh with marketing and that's just one step. The other piece is triangulating those efforts with our parent partnerships office and also with our equity office. And uh in meeting with Ms. Plata, we put a plan in motion to make sure that we are addressing these needs a- actually starting now. As we start looking at pre-K and K uh roundups coming up here soon, to make sure that we are having more, again, boots on the ground to make sure that we're reaching out to those places. We've been in close contact with uh Reed Fort Worth as well to continue to focus on student uh recapturing student strategies. And so we will have more information for you, but please be certain that we're working with our equity teams and our parent partnerships and communications team to have a triangulated effort to make sure we're capturing our students, especially our pre-K ones. Because that's where we lost uh many of our students in elementary.
Right. And, and also we need to make sure we include our neighborhood associations because if, if uh we're not reaching them through those other entities, you definitely will reach them through those.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have trustee Phillips.
All right, thank you, President Ramos. Uh, yeah, so thank uh each of you for this report. Um, you, you know, it's um, it's reality-based and I lo- I love the way that our reporting is starting to happen now. I'm seeing a shift in that, that we're telling the truth. We're just reporting what the story is, right? Um, and just, and that by itself just leads us to be able to actually go in and solve issues uh because we're aware of them. Uh, as disappointing as it is for all of us, I mean, I don't think it is shocking to any of us that these numbers are where they are and they're going to be going down like this unfortunately through circumstances that are outside of our control, of course. Um, and so the beautiful part about what you all did with this, with this whole presentation is uh every time I had a question that popped into my head, it was like the next section or the next slide somehow addressed it uh beautifully, which is this, that's it. I mean, that's, that's the way, that's the way it should be. So that was, that was excellent on all of your behalf that you're an, you're, you're answering the questions as we're going. Um, and, and, and I appreciate you, Jerry, for what you even just said about even the uh, the philosophical shift, right? I mean, that we're even, yeah, we're going to a new mindset about the way that we're doing things and I can appreciate that. And I guess uh with my uh, with my question here, it kind of speaks along that line. It's more, it's more general than it is with the specific because I do think the plan is comprehensive. Y'all, I mean, y'all really went through everything you could saying, what do we have to do here in order to make um those trials happen? So uh, and I know Dr. Scribner, I would love to hear you speak to this as well, I guess more so, how do we, I see what we need to implement. This is the thing that we're going to put in place to say, yes, this is how we're going to uh, you know, curtail that learning curve, get students back where they need to be. Pushing us even further forward, how do we lead on this nationally? Right? Because everyone across the nation is, is suffering from COVID-nineteen, every district is dealing with it. And we're all going to have those post-COVID numbers whenever post-COVID really happens for us, right? We're going to have that, oh, you know, going into COVID, we were here, but COVID did this to us. We're going to see those rise, right? About, okay, now we're coming out of that and we're seeing students begin to progress. And the thing is, I guess more than anything, I, you know, I don't want to hear, you know, that, well, see Fort Worth, now that we're out of this, we're right around the national average or we're right below the national average when it comes to these things. I want us to be able to say, wow, in Fort Worth, when we hit post-COVID, all right, we got our kids back where they needed to be quick and look how they're now thriving, right? And so I don't know what that is all the way, what's going to take that, but I guess I want that to be our mindset. And how do we do that? How do we do it to where we're not, not just going to pat ourselves on the back because we got back somewhere eventually? But how can we be at the very forefront? What is it that we need to be doing to make sure that we're leading on that, that Fort Worth can be a model for, for this is how you overcome a pandemic of learning, right? So yeah, so I'll open that to Dr. Scribner or any of your team you want.
Well, no, absolutely. I think, I think that um there is a realization that we are not going back to the normal um scenario that existed prior to um this COVID um nineteen pandemic. Uh, we, we, we really, I think, it's, it's an opportunity to, to reset and restart. I think the um, the slide that uh N W A forward with regard to the four, the four aspects um of um, of our reset is, is key. I think Jerry makes a great point where historically uh we have been uh focused on intervention, we have been focused on, on extra tutoring, uh extended school day and all of those things matter. But, but they alone will not change the game. It's about tier-one instruction for all students in the classroom on a regular basis. So um, I agree that that's a great opportunity for us um to, to, to think differently uh and implement a program. I think, I think the biliteracy um aspect that Jerry talked about with almost uh half of our students coming from homes uh where English is not the primary language. Uh, I think the board's focus on early mathematics in addition to early literacy is going to um, um result in, 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 in a great foundation for growth. And I think working with our partners, particularly uh with our college career and military readiness work uh with Tarrant to and through, preparing students not only for high school graduation, but for sex, success beyond, is a great opportunity for us to um, to incorporate all of those things. So uh, long um, uh question, big, 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 deep um dive into what we need to do and then please expect us to be coming back to you with um, with reports in each one of those areas of the board's goals of early literacy, uh early mathematics and college career and military readiness.
I appreciate that. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to it as well, but um, Karen, Karen, I'll let you go as well too and then I'll, yeah.
So uh, I, you know, trustee Phillips, uh, I love your passion and we feel it. Um, the first thing is we got to take care of our teachers. That's the first thing. Uh, we got to take care of our teachers, we have to take care of our principals. And we have to prove to the community that our schools are safe. We were seeing gains before COVID. We were finally turning that corner. We were seeing the gains where pre-K, K, first and second graders end of third. This is devastating to us as a system that was turning that corner. So now we got to retract, but we can do it because we were doing it. But now it's like doing less to go faster. So we got to take some things off the plates of the teachers, take some things off the plates of the principals. We know what the issue is. We don't need to go identify it. We don't need to keep collecting data to, you know, address it. We have the data. Now let's get down and dirty with the data. And let's let our teachers speak, let's build their capacity, help them fill in any gap. Because they don't know, this is something new they're dealing with. They, they're used to uh students coming in behind grade level, but this is even more extreme. So how can we help them scaffold and accelerate um through tier-one instruction? And that's like the, like as Jerry was saying, it's a philosophy approach, but it's a sys- you know, it's a system approach as well. Like we really have to, everything is about the campuses right now. It has to be and beyond. The next two, three years, it's campus-based, campus-based, campus-based. And it's not a, we do, we are going to have to put these extra supports in, we'll have our tutoring, we'll do, you know, um, all of our programs and volunteers, but what do our teachers need? Keep them healthy, keep them, uh their professional learning up, but then implement the professional learning. We have wonderful professional learning. Now we need to see it implemented on a daily basis and support that implementation. And it's support our principals to support that. So our, it's a back to almost a customer service base. How are we supporting our campuses right now and how are we communicating to our parents? Bring your kids back. I know it's scary, but I'm really hoping second semester of February, please bring them back into the school. We need them face-to-face. And you know what? Some of the parents I'm sure could use the break who are doing virtual learning as well. So, but, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I'm just passionate about if we're not taking care of our teachers, not taking care of our principals, that's how we're going to be the lead urban district across the nation.
I, I love it. Thank you for that. Thank you for the answers. I think you're one hundred percent right. Um, I'm glad we've said that now. Uh, and of course we got to do it, but you're right. I think that's exactly it. And you know, and even answering, asking this question is not about, you know, bragging rights or something like that for us to be able to say, it's really about if we there, in, in my estimation, and this is where everybody's going to be able to teach me differently if there, if it's not the truth. But in my estimation, we have everything we need in Fort Worth, whether it be money, whether it be personnel, people with intellect, experts, what? We, we can hire the best people, have the best people hired already, all these things where we should be leading uh in the forefront of what it looks like educationally. I mean, and then in the state of Tex- I mean, the state of Texas nationally, we're always in that last quadrant, right? When it comes to, you know, our education. But at Fort Worth I S D, one of the large urbans is the middle of the pack on that, then that means we're really behind so many others. When I just think we have the capability to not be in that, in that boat. And the thing is, if, 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 if this, if this pandemic has in fact uh, is causing us one to re-hit the reset button, sending us backwards first, getting us in debt, I mean, you know, as far as academically, we just, this is the time for, for all of the smart people, that all the people involved, and like you said, the system, where that system though, to figure out how do we overcome this and really go out and lead in it. And I think what you were saying, Karen, is absolutely on point with it. I think the plan is great. It really is comprehensive. I think that if we do this with fidelity, we should get there. I guess I just, I want us to have that mindset of not only just getting back to the base, but really being able to lead and be in forefront. And then even you all being able to tell us as a board, what you need from us for us to be able to help you do that, right? You guys are the ones in the trenches doing the work, implementing all these programs, doing the stuff. I know I speak for my colleagues when I say we want to be able to help you in that. Show us what that is, tell us what that is, so we, so the excuses will be gone and all we'll be talking about is how Fort Worth is leading in education. I don't see any reason why we can't be that instant. So, thank y'all for that. I appreciate it.
Next we have trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Um, you know, you all made me think about mobility and virtual learning. Uh, this is Jermaine. Where are we on Wi-Fi for Fort Worth I S D? And, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but can we get an update on that?
Trustee Jackson, we will give you an update. We um have been collaborating with a couple of different agencies, including the city, the um, the county, as well as some of our private partners. So we'll give you an update on that. But um, I do want to throw it to Jerry Moore because we were hoping someone would ask us about um um devices tonight. So we have some exciting news we're, we want to share with you this evening. It's a good, good setup. Thanks. Did you read my text? No, I'm just kidding. Good setup.
No, I didn't read that text. I'm behind, man.
So trustee Jackson, thank you. Um, you know, we've, we've been working diligently on our um, on our, on our intermediate, intermediate solution for, for Wi-Fi. We have an additional ten thousand hotspots coming in from a, a, a ten million hotspot project. That's not the end result. The more exciting news that we have to share with you is that uh on December fourteenth of this month, three thousand um Chromebooks will be in district uh that we will deploy to our tier-three campuses. And in the first week of January, actually January the fifth, twenty-four thousand Chromebooks will be in Fort Worth I S D that we will deploy to our elementary students, starting with our tier-five, four and three campuses first. That will take us to one-to-one devices for all students. So we now have a date and it's right in front of us.
That's awesome news, Jerry Moore. Thank you. I have one more question. We have kids that are virtually learning and they're not engaging. And teachers are chasing them down and calling them and calling parents. Listen, I've got one of them at my house, the one class she likes to miss. So what are we doing with these students that have potential, but it's resting potential right now at home? Are we encouraging them to come back into school? Is there, is there a process?
So as you know, um, Monday started our first day for our high school. Our high schoolers have three options currently. They have, they can stay virtual. Um, we want to honor that option for this school year. They can remain the hybrid where they come two days a week um, every other Friday. And now we open on Monday that we're asking our in-person learners to come every single day, to come back. And we have not told any parent, and we have asked Sherry and Raul, Dr. Benny and Dr. Washington um with the principal's uh support, if any parent at any time um with the principal's any support. If any parent at any time that's a virtual learner that wants to start in person, we welcome them to come. You know, we're supposed to do every at the beginning of each six week. We don't care. We if you want to come on a Wednesday, you decide Tuesday night. If you decide tonight that you want to be an in-person student, you're virtual, show up tomorrow morning and we're going to get you in your classroom. So we are encouraging it to our parents, to our community. And um and we're going to work harder at that and we're going to keep working. I know our teachers uh for our virtual learners, they they are making contact. Our counselors are making that contact, our principals, assistant principals. Just like, hey, you know, so and so wasn't on today. Um, you know, just we're they're doing that. Um, but we need to get back to school's not an option. And um there's this, and it's not us, it's not Fort Worth I S D, but across the nation, it's like school's an option right now. It's not an option. It's our future. And so we need to get back to that as a society that it it matters that we're engaging with your child. And we want to be there. We want to engage with your child. Um, so we we really all need to just, you know, come together, talk to our neighbors, talk to if you see a child you know, or somewhere it's like, hey, are you virtual or in person? Where are you going to school? Like, you know, we really, we would like to have you back in school. It's just saying it's safe. Come back. Let's get back to that type of a normalcy.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. Next, we have trustee Robbins.
Thank you, President Ramos. Uh, I was very pleased to hear the work we're doing to get to find the kids that aren't in school to 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 tag on what we're talking about, the 300 kids and also the use of parents um as partner. I I wish there was something we could scale uh scale that up somehow so that we could and you know, get more kids back. As you know, there's a lot more than 300 kids that are missing. Um, so any thoughts of how that might happen?
Um, I alluded to earlier uh as that Ms. Potts is working closely with this program to redesign it, and we're looking at exactly what you said. Not just impacting that zero to four group, but why don't we cover a a broader scale of kids in that more uh meaningful grade levels? And so that's a work in progress this school year. And we'll have a plan for you by by before the start of the next year. So we're reevaluating personnel and you know that we with personnel, we have to reevaluate and and do uh do through attrition what we need to do, but um looking at the effectiveness of the programs, the return on investment, the number of students that are being impacted by the current program. And to your point, it's not, it's not maximizing the number of students that need to be served. So it's it's a work in progress right now.
If if there's any way that we could expedite that, uh it would be wonderful. Uh, you know, waiting. And I know you just can't flip a switch and have it happen automatically, but you know, waiting till next year seems like, and I wish there was a way we could build on it as we go. Uh, so it's very important, I think. So thank you.
Will be.
If if I may, um uh trustee Robbins, I was part of a meeting on Friday afternoon um with a potential solution um to finding students who have disappeared. Uh, we uh know that while while um there are some families who are in contact with us, there are many others who 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 are not. And um and there is a service actually that we find that that most of our kids and most of our families have a cell phone. So there is public information about cell phone usage um at a specific address. So the thought is, obviously, we need to go through all the legal ramifications, but but looking at cell phone usage at X address in the months, January through March prior to COVID. And then you can public information track where that cell phone is today. And send someone out and say, hey, you know, that your your child has not has not been coming back back to school. So that's a short term high tech uh conversation that we're having, not only here in Fort Worth, but in several districts across the state. And we want to certainly investigate that. But uh we think that that could also be very promising in terms of kind of the child find um perspective.
Thank you. Thank you. That that sounds like it could have some real potential. So thank you for pursuing everything that we can.
Thank you. Next, we have trustee Luevanos.
Uh, thank you, President Ramos. I would like to um echo what uh trustee Phillips said. Let us know what we can do to support our teachers and our principals to achieve this um this new goal or this strategic plan. Um, so let us know what we can do and we support it.
Um, next, we have trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Ramos. So yeah, just quickly, uh Karen, I know you mentioned um that, you know, that if a family decides that they want to come back in person, now there's no longer the way for the six week period of the semester period or whatever to be able to do that. Is that it? Was that simply high school or is that all across K through 12, pre K through 12, I guess?
Across pre K through 12. We'll see you tomorrow morning.
Okay, alright. Nice to know. I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, it looks like those are all the questions or comments from the board um in this section. So I'm correct, we're moving on to number five? Discussion and action agenda item. So the the agenda calls for a discussion of the Lone Star Governance Quarterly Board Progress Review and Mr. Dale Latham from Region 11 will be collaborating with the board for this discussion. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Latham.
Uh, thank you, President Ramos and Board of Trustees, Dr. Scribner and Ms. Molinar and Mr. Moore. Wow, I just want to say unbelievable. If anyone had any question about what Lone Star Governance looks like in action, you just took them to school in the last two hours. Uh phenomenal, phenomenal training. So we want to shift gears. I want to keep that momentum going. I'm really glad to be here with you uh this evening, but the administrative team, y'all get to put your feet up now and kind of watch the board work. We go through our self-evaluation. I've had the pleasure of the last couple of weeks of having opportunities to meet in small groups uh with teams, uh just to kind of give a background and and President Ramos uh jump in there and add anything to this as we go. I hate to steal any thunder that you might uh want to share, but I wanted to share how my gratitude for having the opportunity to visit in small groups. What we did was we took the Lone Star Integrity Instrument, uh all eight pages of it and divided it up amongst uh team members and had small group coaching conversations with them so that we could come here this evening and let our board lead the discussion around our personal self-evaluation around small components, smaller pieces of the integrity instrument. So I want to go ahead and say, give us grace tonight. This is this is a first. Uh, this is a first for Fort Worth Board uh members to lead their own self-evaluation. And so it's maybe a little messy. It's okay. I'm here to lean on it. But we just want to have a conversation because what we did was we took the integrity instrument, dividing it up and had small conversations with a team that was empowered to really kind of evaluate the documentation that we've done up to this point uh based on our previous quarterly report to tonight uh to present to the rest of the board and to make a recommendation to the rest of the board about what our next steps might be in order to keep our our trajectory uh moving towards the master's focus uh performance on the integrity instrument. So just President Ramos, thank you for this opportunity. I I didn't mean to cut you off, but did you have any questions or any comments that you wanted to start off and or you want me to just take the ball and go?
Mr. Latham, please take the ball and go.
I love it. Well, just to just to bring us back up to speed, I believe everyone has a packet of of what I tried to do was to consolidate all of the different team meetings and the notes that we took so everybody can follow along with some of the documentation and and some of the conversations. But we do have some teams uh here uh of trustees that that uh will want to lead this component of the conversation. And then we have a couple of other pieces uh within the integrity instrument that I may take the lead on, but uh just want to have kind of have round run, round robin discussion around this uh scoring out there. But just kind of bring us back uh to replay the game film. It was back in August, twen- uh August 17th uh that we had our last quarterly, our first quarterly review. And what we did with that initial quarterly review, we'll call it quarter zero. Uh, what we did was we did a reset uh for this board since this this board had recently gone through Lone Star Governance Training again. As a board, we uh tapped the brakes and reevaluated and did an initial baseline, if you will, of where we were. And at that time, uh we were pretty much on uh does not meet focus in a lot of the areas, but um if you've already, if you're kind of like uh I am, you may have already thumbed through the back of the book and found uh the final score uh and we've made some progress. So I'm just, I don't want to be a spoiler, but we have made some progress in putting in some systems and some uh components that are helping to kind of create the what we've had in place tonight, what we witnessed tonight. So uh initially, I guess we can go down through this uh in order of the of the integrity instrument. And as the trustees, one of the things that we didn't finalize in a lot of our coaching discussions was the who's going to lead the discussion. Some are, some of us are going to tag team and some of us are going to take a lead on one piece. And so I don't, I didn't have that written down specifically, but as we go through this, you may see one of the trustees jump in there. And if if we don't, then I'll take the ball and go with it. We'll just keep pressing through this. So with vision one and two, those two were combined together for a team. And so looking at vision one, uh who was trustee Robbins? I see you're on mic. Did you want to go ahead and talk through vision one for the group?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Latham. I I would like to uh discuss briefly vision one and trustee uh Louis Banos will discuss uh vision two. And then trustee Jackson had some uh wonderful thoughts on the whole process, which I hope she'll share with us to to close this out. Um, what we're going to do tonight is talk about where where we were last quarter, where we are now and how we know where we are. And uh where do we want to be next quarter? And what are the some of the things that we can do to get there? Uh, the mission statement for our district is to prepare all students for success in college career and community leadership. And in vision one, the board has adopted student outcome goals to accomplish that. Student outcome goal number one is to increase the percentage of third grade students who score at or meets grade level or above on star reading from 34 to 47% by August of 2024. Uh, student outcome goal number two is to increase the percentage of third grade students who score at meet grade level or above on star mathematics from 34 to 45% by August of two 2024. And student outcome goal number three is to increase the percentage of students graduating with a C C M R indicator from 43% to 48% by August of uh 2024. Uh, the previous quarter, we we were at does not meet focus and we had a score of zero. Uh, we think our current status is that we meet focus uh and have a score of 12. Uh, we adopted uh student outcome goals and G P Ms at our board meeting on September 22nd, 2020. And you can go back and look at the minutes of that if you if you if you would like to verify that. Our next quarter target is to uh move to masters uh or a level of uh 15, a score of 15. And we think the next steps to do that will be to continue receiving and approve monitoring reports for the monitoring calendar that we have set earlier. Uh, secondly, the board and the superintendent commit committed a vision and S O Gs to memory so that we'll all know what these three uh S O Gs are. Uh, next, we want the board to uh know the status of each S O G at at any given point in time. And then finally, to engage the community to seek broad community ownership of the student outcome goals, which is what we're doing this evening. Uh, we think we have a a quarter, this quarter goal uh but we'd like for the board to to feel that same way. And so uh if if you do, um, we would like to, we'd like to know that. So turn it over to trustee Louis Banos, please.
Sounds good. So we, right now, we're currently in vision one at 12, and our target for the next quarter will be a 15. I'll record that as we go.
Thank you, um, trustee Robbins. So vision two, the board has adopted goal progress measures allowing to reach student outcome goal. And our, in our previous quarter, we cannot meet focus, so we have a score of zero. And we believe that uh right now, our current score is a four um preparing to focus. So we adopted these goals um on uh September 22nd, 2020. And our goal for the next quarter is to move to 12, which is uh meet focus. And how can we get there? Uh, we can get there by reducing the number of um G P Ms for um student outcome goals, three to three to kind of three to kind of monitoring reports. And they, by continuing receiving and approve uh monitoring reports for the monitoring calendar schedule. And by engaging our stakeholders in our in Lone Star Governance, board and the superintendent agree that it's a broad community ownership of um goal progress measure. And that's it for um vision two.
Jackson? Thank you, trustee Luevanos. Uh, I want to thank Dale Latham because he has really demystified Lone Star Governance, but I still believe that that the public doesn't know enough about what this board is doing. And I just want the public to know that that and and I'm trustee Norman's, please, trustee Robbins, please correct me if I leave something out as to what you wanted me to say, but um there are only 100 of 1,200 districts in the state of Texas that are participating in Lone Star Governance. And that puts us right now in the top 8%. So this is leading work. It's not following work. And uh it features a framework and that that framework keeps our board aligned with administration. And it also allows us to focus our time, which I will talk about when I discuss uh accountability one, but it allows us to focus our time on students. And so you'll notice trustees moving back to students each time. And so I just wanted to make sure that that we could clarify that for the public so they know the reason that we spend time on this and why it's so important. And the end result is to improve our children's education. Thank you, trustee Robin.
Thank you.
Trustee Luevanos.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Wow, y'all are uh making my heart smile. Uh, it's it's kind of hard to follow. How do you follow up that? Uh, great work. Just to make sure that I captured uh what trustee uh trustee Lue- Luevanos uh scored said, uh, we were currently at a four. What we need to do is to trim down one of the goal progress measures off of student outcome goal three. We had four of those. We pared that down. Um, not that it's not going to be monitored, but to really uh kind of hone in on three goal progress measures that are really going to be predictive of that student outcome goal. Uh, then we'll uh potentially the next target be a mass at the meets level focus at a nine. So thank you for sharing that. Any any other questions about that one before we move on? Thank you. So with vision three, um, not sure who anybody want to take the ball on three, or do you want me to take?
Yeah, um, no, that's that's myself and trustee Brookins, trustee Brookins. You do you have anything you want to lead off with or and or did you want me to take it?
You can go ahead and I'll chime in.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. So vision three is related to board constr- or it's related to constraints. And so uh where we were prior to to this, we were at uh does not meet focus. So we had a score of zero. Uh, current uh status is that we're preparing to focus. Um, so as as my colleagues will see on vision three, preparing to focus was that the board has has indeed adopted one to five superintendent constraints and owned the constraint development process while working collaboratively with the superintendent. Uh, the where it approaches focus, because the other marker there is that each superintendent constraint describes a single operational action or class of actions, the superintendent. may not use or allow. And we've got some next steps that would ideally get us to meets focus, which would get us a twelve, a score of twelve. And what we've got to do is work on our own board constraints. So while we've taken care of superintendent constraints, we as a board now are charged with identifying one to five board self constraints. That'll get us at that marker. And the other part to this is that we continue to receive and approve monitoring reports per the monitoring calendar schedule, which I will I will thank trustee Evans for for that push and duly noted for how important that is so that we as a board have enough time to prepare and the staff for them to know what the information it is and what what the presentations are going to be. And also from my understanding is that that keeps us from going too long at board meetings that pulls us away from student outcomes focus. So trustee Brook is anything to add on vision three?
No, I was just going to say exactly what you just said at the end. We want to make sure that we stay focused on student outcome.
Yes, ma'am. So vision, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to chime in to show to also add on to that, that I'm committed in this next quarter to work with the board and we'll get your board constraints propped up. Get those ready to go for adoption whenever we get ready. So I believe that team's looking at possibly bringing some recommendations. So thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Latham. So vision four is that the board has adopted superintendent constraint progress measures, which we reference as CPMs. And so we have met the the part of preparing to focus, which included the board has adopted CPMs for each superintendent constraint. Second under there is that the superintendent owned the CPM development process while working collaboratively with the board. And then third, that the status of each adopted CPM is able to be updated multiple times during each school year. We have also met the approaches focus, so that least two, which the points for that is that the board has adopted no more than three CPMs for each superintendent constraint. And all CPMs include a one to five year deadline of a month and a year, a baseline and annual target. And also the meets focus is where we, so sorry, yeah, the meets focus is where we're currently at. We're the score of four points because all board members and a superintendent agree that the CPMs will, as trustee trustee Phillips charged tonight, will challenge the organization to focus on the vision, will challenge the organization to uphold community values, are all predictive of their respective constraint and are influenceable by the superintendent. So next steps for us is to continue to receive the board monitoring calendar, which we've discussed and engage stakeholders in Lone Star Governance. The board and the superintendent agree that there is a broad community ownership of the CPMs. Anything to add, trustee Brookins on vision four?
Now, that's good. You covered it.
Excellent. Making sure I'm got the correct numbers. We're currently at a four and our target proposed to the board to accept is it will be at masters level focus, which will earn maximum points on that particular criteria under vision four. Thank you. So our next next component, if we're going in orders about accountability, one, we had a team meeting on that one, I believe trustee Brookins and trustee Jackson, a couple of others were in there. Did one of y'all want to divide this up or did you want me to take it accountability one?
I can take it, Dale, if it's okay with you.
Absolutely.
I want to thank Dale for taking Daphne and and I threw this. We talked again about features and benefits, and this is the place where the rubber meets the road. We began in the we began on August seventeenth of twenty twenty with the workshop. And our last meeting that we recorded was November sixteenth of twenty twenty. And our first meeting, we had eighty one percent of our minutes spent on focus children. And throughout this, we've had eighty one all the way down to zero and our average is forty four percent. Twenty five percent is meets expectations, but we are eighty eight percent of the way to hitting the masters focus, which is fifty percent. And I believe we can do that. And I do think one thing that that would help us is we could get the agenda out a couple of days earlier. We worked really hard in November twenty seventeen to get the agenda out ten days ahead of time. And I know it almost killed everyone that gets the agenda out. But if we can get out a couple of days earlier, we can call in with questions and then we won't ask them here unless they're pertinent for the public. And I think that's it, Dale, unless you have something else you can add, Daphne?
No, I just, I think that we're already on the right track from just the meeting that we had tonight is exciting. And and it shows how we keep coming back to the main focus and which is our our student. So I believe we are on the right track. So we just need to keep it going.
You're absolutely true, absolutely correct with that. What I, one thing that I would add in that packet, that portfolio that I built for you with with all of the the documentation at the tail end of it, you're going to see multiple time trackers that have been collected for each one of the board meetings. And so if I wasn't there because I couldn't be there present with you like, you know, I'm at home tonight with you. What I've done is I've gone back and watched all of the videos for every one of your board meetings, and that's how we did the time tracker. Moving forward, I believe I'll be working with a couple of the A team staff members that they'll be able to provide this in house for you as we hand this off. But you'll be able to go back and look at all the time trackers. What I tried to do on this one particular page for you was to do a summation of the time spent. You're spot on with with forty four. I think it's really averaged out to forty four point five percent of your time was spent focused on student outcomes in within the meetings. What we do is we pair out the time that you spend in executive session, any time spent for allowing for statutory required public comment and such like that. So that's really, that's really the total runtime of business that's being operated where we could have spent our time looking at student outcomes and how it shook out. I'll go ahead and share that across the state at the moment. I'm only aware of one board in the entire state that has been able to consistently hit fifty for a quarter. That it's tough. That is really an aspirational goal because of all the other things that we need to work on to to have school, but it's an aspirational goal. Hopefully we reach that. We're really, we're knocking on the door, but we're right in there at that forty to forty five percent. And that's forty five percent of our time that we're focusing on kids. And that's that's time well spent in my book. But thank you for sharing that. So I've got us at a twelve right now with really trying to reach fifteen at the masters level for the next go around. So accountability two. Anybody want to chime in there or do I get to play?
Sure. Yeah, no, I know that this one falls with trustee Levano's trustee Jackson and myself. And then my colleagues, feel free to chime in previously. Well, and then I'll note that the accountability two relates to the board evaluates, but does not interfere with the progress toward improving student outcomes. So previous quarter, we were at approaches focus. And current status is that we're still at approaches focus. The next steps for us is going to be the staff use tracker to be shared annually. And that on the Lone Star Governance model speaks to the board receives at least annually a report on the average cost of state of time of staff time spent on governance using the staff use tracker. And then it'll say that one quarter ago, the board performed a self evaluation using the LSG integrity instrument and voted to approve the quarterly progress tracker. I get the significance of that one as well so that we're being mindful of the dollars spent on the work that we're doing as a governing team. So currently we are at approaches focus and we hope to move to meets focus by the next quarter.
And so once again, this was one of those those items that I'll I'm going to take ownership of is to get with the administrative team. Just we were really focused on getting school established and get our student outcome goals monitoring. And so the next step for us, I didn't want to put any more on their plate. So eventually I'll get with the A team. We'll work on a staff use tracker, provide that to you in a board report meet that annual requirement. You're exactly right. It gives us an opportunity just to ensure that we are identifying efficiencies and effectiveness of how we're running our board meetings. So good, good, good call. So I've got us now to two with a target of four going to the next one. So our next team was the structure team. I had an opportunity. Anybody want to jump in on that one or do you want me to take? Let me let me go ahead and jump in on it. With the structure team, what we're looking at is how the board structures its time and and its work to operate in a way that allows a superintendent to accomplish its mission. And if you're following along with your integrity instrument, when we initially, we were at a does not meet focus, but in order for us to score in the preparing to focus, what we began to do after we adopted our student outcome goals is we began to see these monitoring reports coming to us that we had monitored had calendared on our monitoring calendar. And so making sure that the board's informed and staying current on the student outcome goal data, we saw some of that data this evening being shared by Dr. Rispe. Also, within that performance report, monitoring report that comes to you, having an opportunity for the administrative team, Dr. Scrivener, to provide some input into the scores and the information that's shared with you. One other thing that we've been looking at is analyzing our board meetings and how we structure the board meeting itself to to really kind of free up time so we can spend more time focused on student outcome reports and goals and such. And so looking at and analyzing our board agendas to put information into consent agenda so that that can be taken off the off of the action items. And then also we adopted a monitoring calendar. And that monitoring calendar in this past quarter has not been modified. It probably will need to be modified now that we've had some information coming in from map testing and also we may see it may see it get some tweaks being made to it here in this next quarter, but that's going to be natural because that's just the response we have to have in this in this environment to ensure that we're getting the reports to you in a timely manner as they come in. One of the things that we also look at is amount of time spent on meetings. And so what I did on this particular monitoring report for you on this particular one was I took all the board meetings, all nine that we've had since the last quarter, including the quarterly review, looked at the total runtime on those. And then how many topics have we worked on in that meeting? Now, what a topic is, is an action item that requires board consideration and a vote. And so what I did break down for you under the column of topics were the number of action items of the required board consideration and a vote and did an average. And what we're looking at is over the quarter trying to maintain the best we can, an average of no more than five action items that require board action so that we can like I said, try to carve out as much time as possible for us to really focus on student outcomes and such. So with that one, where we were, as I said, in the in the baseline was where it does not meet focus currently. Looking at the steps that we put in place in the system so far, we're at a solid approaches for approaches focus. To to keep moving forward, probably the next target is going to be for us to get to the meets focus. The meets focus would be our our target for the next go around. I misspoke on my numbers. It would be yeah, twelve for that one. So questions about the the structure component or any of the data that was shared with you in that portfolio? Currently at a four, target of next quarter being a meets focus at a twelve. Then we had our advocacy team meeting the other day. Had trustee Dar Evans and trustee Paz in these. And so we had a conversation around our advocacy efforts and some of the systems we want to put in place to ensure that we have a solid two way communication opportunities. So I'm going to be quiet and turn it over to, I'm not sure, was it trustee Paz or somebody going to, yeah, trustee Paz?
So I'm gonna, I'm just going to kind of review advocacy and then I'll turn it over to trustee Dar and she'll review our conversation and then trustee Evans will discuss our next step. And so with advocacy, the advocacy portion of this framework, the whole mindset behind advocacy is the concept that we as a school board have a responsibility to seek out feedback from our community that we serve and that this also requires us to do to educate our constituents about the needs of the school district, where we are as a school district and whatnot. So this is what Lone Star Government calls ownership services. If you remember when we were in our training, they talked about the difference between customer service and owner owner service and customer service belongs to the administrative team and owner service belongs to the school board. So you know, there, there are a lot of things that we can be doing. This is a, this is one of the areas that we haven't really engaged with a lot with Lone Star Governance, which is why the one that I'm I think the most excited about because we have a lot of opportunities to get some easy wins here. So with that, I will turn it over to trustee Dar.
Thank you, trustee Paz. We we've spent a lot of time actually kind of diving into these the criteria for each for each area of focus. And we decided we definitely were not a zero because we have had opportunities for the community to engage with the public. We've had quite a few town hall meetings and this actually is over the last twelve months. So it also includes the town hall meetings that we had regarding the redistricting that happened back in February. So there were town hall meetings at the beginning of school, but then also back in February. With the area of one, well, for one point, which will be preparing to focus, we have mastered both of those objectives. We're listening for and discussing the vision and values for our students. And we're listening for and discussing the vision and values of our staff and community members. Where we think we'd land, actually, we are at a one right now. Where we want to move to is a three. We have been, we feel like we've mastered that top one where we're providing time during regular scheduled board authorized public meetings to recognize the accomplishments of students and staff. But what we do need to do is focus more on hosting some community meetings that focus more on student objectives, the student outcome goals. And I'm going to let trustee Evans take us into what the next steps would be.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Our next step is going to be to refine our two way meetings to continue to focus on our student outcome goals. An ideal sort of setting would be two to four trustees and senior members of our administrative staff maybe doing a virtual meeting with three of our pyramids or so. That second element of approaches focus is meeting with each heater pattern. But particularly the spring, since virtual is the name of the game for some of this ancillary stuff outside the classroom. Maybe we could lump some of those together and meet with the groups, the different campus communities together. If we jump over to meets focus, the first one, that's low hanging fruit and we could do that, the displaying and keeping status of all our target goals and progress measures. I would also like to see that one posted virtually, meeting virtually as well. And so we really think that we can get to approaches focus by next quarter. One of those things, like I said, is perhaps like a town hall different groups. That goes right back to what trustees Robin and Louis Banos said in vision one and two about continuing to dialogue with our our parent stakeholders about our student outcome goals so that those kind of just play right together. And then a last tidbit would be to Lone Star Governance Training for the community and the pyramids.
Yeah. So Dale, before you go, I'd like to just say one one more quick little piece that I didn't say when I when I started, but then when CJ was speaking, I was like, oh, I forgot this really important piece. So as Toby had said, when she was giving her report, you know, the community really doesn't know what Lone Star Governance is. They don't know what are the work that our board is doing and how much progress that we have made along the way. And this is really where the rubber hits the road and where we as a board can you know, have the opportunity to go out and to be the ones speaking to our constituents, to our stakeholders and letting them know how important governance is in us achieving our goals. achieving our goals as a district. And, you know, it's not only a matter of just letting them know, but it's also, you know, as people have more faith in an organization when they know that it's being led and that it has the oversight being given to these decisions that we're making. And, um, you know, I think the only, the only, we can only gather, um, good from, you know, these activities with going out into the community or hosting virtual events. And having, you know, me going into a district that isn't the one where I'm elected or, you know, having CTO come to my district and Daphne come to my district or, you know, me going to Norman's or Q's. Uh, but really having board members show that they care about all of Fort Worth ISD, uh, not just the, the people who elect them. I think that there's a lot of power in that. And this is where we can build some credibility, um, as a board and show them just how strong this team is.
Also well said. I was, I was kind of pausing to see if anybody else wanted to piggyback on that message. Uh, so we're, this is one that we did have a conversation around, you know, initially when we did our baseline, we had ourselves at, at, um, at the approaches focus based on previous town hall meetings. But the team got together the other day when we were talking on this and pushing back. And that's, that's what I loved about this conversation. They pushed back on each other and say, you know, what we want to do is, is push back to preparing to focus. So we're not chasing the points on this one, but what we want to do is truly build a systemic two-way communication system that's going to outlast us all. So that no matter who's in these seats, uh, leading the school district, this will just be a, uh, standard by which we operate as a board in this governance model called Lone Star Governance. So I love that they pushed back. So what we're, what we really did was we pushed back and lost some points in this one with a, a target to let's really establish a good two-way communication system, go ahead and plan this out strategically, roll this out and get us back up there to the approaches focus and really beyond, uh, move forward. So currently what, what our trustees will see is the baseline, we, we were at three, we're dropping back down to one for the current status and we're, we're targeting to go back up to three on that. So the last, last section that we have on here was the, um, unity piece. And I believe that was trustee Phillips and, and a couple of others. Anybody want to jump in there on that one on the unity?
Yes, Dale, really appreciate you, man. And yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. I, I love what our trustee Paz was just saying. It just leads right into what we're talking about as far as the unity aspect of what we're doing. So when we think, when it comes to this one, we, um, in the previous quarter, we were approaches focus with, um, at three, at three points for that. And so we were, uh, you know, we, we were, um, maintaining our attendance rate. We know we showed to the board meetings and do everything that we need to do as far as that is concerned. And we understand that every member, uh, is responsible for the outcomes of all students. And so what we want for our current status right now, it is our estimation that we're at meets focus. That, that will be the nine-point, um, marker that we have here. Again, it's talking about our attendance with board meetings, which we all showing up and we're doing those jobs very well. It's also agreeing that we have adhered to the board policies, um, and, and that, um, every member has completed the, the training. So as far as the training goes, I believe Dale, and you can chime in here if you would like, as far as the trainings that we have bad dated, we have somewhat of an extension there, I think, to the end of January to make sure we're in compliance with all of our trainings. And so, um, so, uh, again, it's just something that we can definitely do individually is make sure that we're on top of what those hours and what those trainings look like. Have those knocked out by the end of January, but so far it looks like we're tracking well there. So it looks like we are a beats focus, uh, nine there as far as our next steps in order to be able to go to the next level in which we want to, which is the maximum amount of points of master focus for ten. Instead develop those four constraints like we were talking about a little earlier. I think President Ramos alluded to that in one of his presentations. Uh, complete those training requirements that we just spoke about, um, by, by the end of January of 2021. Adhere to the board operating procedures, uh, like we've been doing, but continue that and then continue those success rate we've had as far as our attendance at board meetings. And then we will have maximized our points there.
Spot on. And so in that, in that graphic or then that, uh, portfolio of documentation there, I did a, uh, summary of all the attendance rates and and this board maintains a, a solid 95% attendance rate, uh, in all board meetings. And so not having to chase down enough board members to have a quorum. So well done on that one. So with that, yes, ma'am.
Um, may I make a request? Cause part of being, getting up to that meat's focus is that every member on this board has completed all statutory required trainings. And it would help me because I don't want to be that missing link, uh, to make, to know that I, um, to have that data to know that I, I think I have completed all those trainings. I would love confirmation from, uh, the leadership team to make sure that, that I have so that if I haven't, I can get it taken care of.
Absolutely. And as trustee Phillips had mentioned, because of this COVID waivers that the commissioners put up, uh, for trustees, that you really actually do have until January 31st to make up any trains that you, you needed to get during the, the 1920 school year. Now, of course, we still could begin working on our 2021, uh, training requirements, but you have some time, uh, some whole harmless time here to get that done. So, uh, we can work on that, be happy to help. So, uh, President Ramos, uh, anything for the greater good before we do the big reveal on our new scores, uh, for this quarter?
Um, no, I mean, just wanting the, the sense of pride in, in, um, in, in, in our board and our, our team of, our team of 10. And appreciate, uh, I know a lot of us have given you appreciation and really because that's the importance of what we have learned the hard way of, and the, the significance of having a Lone Star Governance coach, to have someone that can walk us through the framework. Um, and, and I think the, the part that I really appreciate about what's happening is we're demonstrating that we can have the technical pieces, we can have a framework, but the adaptive approach that is coming to play with the board that, uh, is working together, that, uh, is, is focusing on student outcomes and the accountability piece now. This I think is going to enhance that, that we, we monitor ourselves. Um, that not having to be the, the, the role of the A team or the superintendent, but that that's the role that we have. Because I think, um, I'll speak for what's true for me. I understand the significance of that there are certain characteristics and certain behaviors of high functioning boards. And on the opposite end of that, there are characteristics and behaviors of low functioning boards. Uh, and the parallels that run as we talk about Lone Star Governance, the parallel processing that, um, that can be positive or that can be negative. And what it, what, what I think, um, I get to witness tonight is, is that upward trajectory, um, with that mindset of what my colleagues are talking about. We don't want mediocrity. We want, we want absolute excellence and that's absolutely what, uh, what our young people deserve. So those are my notes. Back to you, Mr. Latham.
I just have to reiterate what you said. Every interaction I've had with these trustees, I am so appreciative of the way that this whole team of 10 shows up with their heart, uh, in the right place for what we saw tonight, 77,108 students of Fort Worth ISD. Uh, and that every interaction I've had, I have come to realize that you do have every one of those kids in your heart, uh, best interest in your heart. And so as long as I can, uh, my goal is to ask the right questions, uh, to keep pushing you and propelling you, I call them propelling questions. But propel you on that trajectory to become a master level performing board. And then hopefully coach myself out of work. You know, it's my goal to eventually y'all tell me to leave, uh, because you've got this. And we have built a systemic system of governance for Fort Worth ISD that outlives us all. And this is just the way that we do things. So I'm in it for the long haul. Like I've told you many times, it sounded like a broken record, but I'm with you until you tell me to leave because you can do this. You can do this work and you did it tonight. So I hope it wasn't too scary. Wasn't too messy this first time for us to do this. What we're going to see moving forward with these quarterly reviews as you put these up in, in your board meetings, they're going to go faster and faster and faster. Cause we're eventually going to get to a point, uh, as we move through accomplishing these tasks, these behaviors, uh, that we're just going to be confirming that we stayed at the, the meats level or masters level focus and didn't lose any points. And what we need to do to maintain that momentum and keep it going. So they'll go quicker. This one really right now has clocked in at right at 40 minutes. Uh, so time well spent, every bit of it counts because we're doing, we're focused on board self-evaluations. We're good with that. So the big reveal, if you haven't already turned to the back of the book to look at your scores, uh, what I would propose to the board, if it, it meets the approval of the board, uh, that our time, our quarterly progress tracker for this quarter has realized that we have moved from our previous score of eight at a baseline to a current score of 51. If we maintain this trajectory with the, and hit our targets for the next go around and do achieve 85 points, what that will do is put you on the Lone Star Governance Leaderboard that Texas Education Agency props up. Uh, so we've got you on a trajectory to do that. But as, uh, trustee Paz mentioned earlier, you know, the advocacy piece is one of those that we're probably is going to see, it's going to take us a little while to get all the systems in place. So we're not bear in mind, we're trying to build systemic systems, uh, of, of board governance here. And so, uh, let's keep pushing back on each other. I appreciate how you showed up to the table. And so with that, President Ramos, I would propose, uh, that the board, uh, consider 51 as your current score for this quarter. And if it meets approval, then you can approve this at, at this board meeting or a later board meeting. Just let me know and I'll turn it into the Texas Education Agency Lone Star Governance Office. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Latham. So the grand total of 51, um, is what we as a collective board have come up with. Uh, this will require, um, a vote. Uh, so I'll be looking for a motion to accept.
I'll move.
So we have a motion by trustee Ashley Paz.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Toby Jackson. Uh, any discussion? Trustee Paz?
I just have a brief, brief discussion, more of an announcement. So, um, the policy committee, so some of the things that we have on here, uh, the policy committee is working on, uh, such as the, um, board, the board, um, governance manual and, uh, reviewing, reviewing our policies to ensure that, uh, none of our board policies uh, cross the line into, um, management. We actually have, uh, leadership ISD fellows who are going to be supporting us with that this year. And, um, some other things that will hopefully help us, um, move forward. So expect to see some of those things as hopefully as early as, um, this next month. So excited about that.
Great. Thank you, trustee Paz. Next, uh, trustee Dar.
Thank you, President Ramos. Um, just very quickly in the spirit of advocacy, uh, for those who are watching this video or watching live right now, uh, you can very easily access the Lone Star Governance Manual by Googling, uh, or using whatever search engine you choose, uh, Lone Star Governance, it'll take you to the TEA website. And on the right-hand side, it says participant manual. If you click on that, you can see the documents that we've been looking at and begin to familiarize yourself with this particular process. It's really quite, um, it's fairly self-explanatory. It's, it's, um, it's worth the read. So.
Okay. Looks like there's no more questions or comments. Uh, we have a motion by trustee Paz, a second by trustee Jackson. Uh, I will call on each trustee, uh, to vote and please say yes, no, or abstain. We'll begin with District Two trustee Toby Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you. District Three trustee Quinn Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. District Four trustee Daphne Brookins.
Yes.
Thank you. District Five trustee CJ Evans.
Yes.
Thank you. District Six trustee Andor.
Yes.
Thank you. District Seven trustee Norman Robbins.
Yes.
Thank you. District Eight trustee Anna Luebunas.
Yes.
Thank you. District Nine trustee Ashley Paz.
Yes.
And District One trustee Jacinto Ramos Jr. And I vote yes. The motion passes nine, four and zero against. Uh, we'll move on to discussion of consent agenda items. Uh, as board president, I'm making the following statement in accordance with the board policy BBFA local. This is a reminder to all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Uh, please note that item B11, which was approved purchase of library books at Maude M. Walton Elementary School has been removed from the consent agenda items and will not be addressed at this evening's meeting. Are there any questions or comments concerning consent agenda item? Looks like we have trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Uh, quick question about consent item B3, approved purchase of bipolar ionizers for elementary campuses with rooftop air conditioning units. My apologies for not calling earlier. I just saw this as HVAC, but it's not at all. I guess these questions would be for Art DeVos. Are you there, Art?
Yes, ma'am. We're here.
Uh, first question, does this kill COVID-19?
What, uh, the ionization does is it, um, treats the air, makes the virus larger so that it can be caught by the existing filters and not recirculated in, into the air. So it doesn't kill it, it, it captures it.
Thank you. And is there any other district utilizing this technology? And do we have any data from other districts?
Uh, across the nation, it's been used in different applications, uh, districts across Texas like Austin and, uh, Klein and some other Houston districts are, um, moving towards, uh, this technology. We are, uh, doing so only in our elementaries and for those, uh, the systems that have, uh, rooftop air units. And this will continue to work even after COVID, uh, in helping us keep our buildings, uh, free of other viruses and germs and bacteria.
Well, it also works on, uh, um, solvents and things like that, odors in the air and all that. Is that correct?
Pollutants, that's correct.
And then, uh, I guess, uh, the question I, I would have is how will we keep these certified or know that they are indeed functioning as they should? Do we have somebody that monitors the air or how does that work?
Yes, we have an environmental department, uh, that, um, oversees, uh, all, all the, um, air type of qualities and we test the air as needed.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I think, uh, this should be something that the public and our, our students and our employees should be, uh, very encouraged by. And thank you for, uh, moving us forward, Mr. Paz.
We, we certainly recommend it and the whole team supports it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next, trustee Evans.
Thank you, President Ramos. Um, can y'all tell me a little bit more about item B1? And I thought we were getting a dollar for dollar offset for all CARES money received. And I just want to make sure, is this money going to be deducted or offset from next year's budget?
I'm, I'm happy to address that, uh, trustee Evans. The, uh, the answer is, uh, and I probably should turn my camera on as well. The answer is, um, the, there is a set aside, if you will, in the CARES funding that's, that's required to what's called equitable services to provide the federal funding to nonprofit schools within the boundaries of Fort Worth ISD. And our, our grants department has reached out, uh, and it has quite a, uh, system to reach out to all of these schools, gauge their interest and then, um, this set aside is determined basically based on the ratio of their headcount of students to our headcount. And, and the number that's, that's been assigned to us as being the set aside that's for those nonprofit schools is about $1.9 million. And, um, as you may know, there's been some litigation in the federal courts about that. The state of Michigan and some other plaintiffs sued, uh, Secretary DeVos about this, this, how this amount was calculated. Uh, that was back in August and, and so there's been some controversy about this, but as we sit here tonight, we are required, um, to, to dedicate that $1.9 million to these private schools within our boundaries. And the constraints that we have on, on that, we, we are the, uh, recipient of the federal funding. These other schools are the sub recipients. So we, we maintain the responsibility for compliance. And so these entities are required to get consent from us. And so these entities are required to get consent from us prior to obligating themselves for these funds. And the two questions we ask really are, is the item legal to use public funds for? And would the, would the expenditure comply with the grant terms? And on these, on this item, the answer to both those questions is yes. And so we are, we are recommending the board approve those on that basis. The question about the one-for-one trade-off is, is, is true except for this set aside for the private school. So there's been a lot of different categories of CARES funding at the state level. So it, it, it might be a little bit, say exactly, a one-for-one trade-off, but it's approaching one-for-one, probably is the better way to say that.
Okay. Next, we have trustee Paz.
Yeah, Mr. Ball, come back because I'm asking this question about the same thing, follow-up to that. So it's, it's my understanding, and I actually have, have the letter pulled up here, on September twenty-fifth, Secretary DeVos wrote, she submitted a letter to the, essentially in response to the litigation against them because they were ruled, essentially that a federal court ruled against the Department of Education with the Equitable Services portion of the CARES Act. And it was my understanding that we were no longer required to distribute these funds to private schools.
I think trustee Paz, my best understanding is that the, the federal court action really had to do with the methodology of calculating the set aside, not whether or not it should, should exist. And I, so I think, and I'm not schooled up on all the intricacies of the, of the case that the plaintiffs were, were making with the court. But it's my best understanding that it, that the issue was how the, the set aside would be calculated. And my, my current understanding is that's been settled and TEA is as, as the cognizant agency, if you will, for us, that, that's who we are accountable for, or we are accountable to TEA. And then they in turn are accountable to US, US Department of Education on this, the CARES funding. We are required to, to use this set aside funding for the private schools in our, in our district.
Okay. If, so if we were to table this until the next meeting, what kind of impact would that have?
I, I think it would have significant impact, trustee Paz, on these, these entities having good faith gone out and made their plans. And although, although in our budget of approaching eight-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, these items are much less significant in our big picture than they are in the big picture of these much smaller entities. So I think it would be, it would be placing significant hardship and, and could, could make us look to both to them and potentially to TEA as, as us not operating in good faith with them.
Okay. I'm, I'm not going to request that we, that we pull it and table it, but I would, moving forward, could we please get, get some legal interpretation on, on this to, to make sure that we're, you know, not, I know that we have a much bigger budget than small private schools, but they're also private schools. They have alternative funding. But I would, it would be really nice if we could get some, have, have some legal interpretation of, of that because it's not, from the Council of Great City Schools, you know, the, the reports that they've been giving us, that's not really consistent with what we've been told. So I would, you know, every, we need every penny we've got.
Absolutely. We will certainly provide that, trustee Paz. Great, great, great point. We're happy to do that.
Thank you.
It looks like we don't have any other questions from the board on consent agenda. We will reconvene and close meeting executive session here in a bit. So the time is nine oh seven PM. The date is Tuesday, December eighth, 2020. We will now recess and reconvene virtually for executive session as authorized by chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code under sections five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, point zero-seven-two, point zero-seven-four, and point zero-seven-six. Negative started. In accordance with the open meetings law, the board opened a meeting at five-thirty-two PM in a private video conference with a quorum present, recessed and reconvened open session virtually, adjourned regular session, convened executive session, and then adjourned executive session is now reconvened in open session at nine-fifty-three PM in the public virtual video conference with a quorum present. All trustees are here and accounted for via in-person or virtual. I will move us on to number eleven, which is accepting consent agenda items. Do I have a motion accepting consent agenda item?
Right.
We have a motion by trustee Toby Jackson. You have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Norman Robbins. Please use the feature, the raise your hand feature to save us all time if you have any discussion on consent agenda items. Looks like no hands, no discussion on consent agenda items. We will move to vote. I will call on each trustee. Please say yes or no. Trustee Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Brookins?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Luvenos?
Yes.
Trustee Paz?
Yes.
And trustee Ramos, and I vote yes. Motion passes nine, four, and zero against. No items were removed from, from consent agenda. We will move on over to thirteen A, action agenda item thirteen A. Assuming this, is this, this one that needs to be voted on legal counsel? Don't know if, do we have thirteen A discussion in action? No? So no thirteen A is needed, thirteen B either? So no thirteen B is needed either. So we will move on to thirteen C, which is the discussion in action to approve memorandum of understanding between Fort Worth Independent School District and MiFi LLC. Do I have a motion? I'm a, a motion by trustee Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Ashley Paz. Please use the raise your hand feature for anyone that'd like to have any discussion on this item. Looks like no discussion.
I've got some.
I'm sorry. Trustee Jackson?
Yes, thank you, President Ramos. I'll be recusing myself from this vote as the five oh one C three, I'm executive director of Fort Worth Spark, will be working on the social media aspect of this with the algorithms in conjunction with MiFi.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. We will, no more, I don't see any more discussion on this item. So we'll move to, please say yes, no, or abstain. District Two trustee Toby Jackson?
Same.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Brookins?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Luvenos?
Yes.
Trustee Paz?
Yes.
You know, trustee Ramos, and I vote yes. So the motion passes eight, four, zero against, and one person abstaining. We will move on to D, discussion in action to approve waiving first reading revisions to board policy FFG Local. Do I have a motion?
Ashley Paz, some move.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Paz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Phillips. Please use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to have any discussion. Looks like no discussion on the item. So we'll move to vote. I'll call each of your names, trustees. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Brookins?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Luvenos?
Yes.
Trustee Paz?
Yes.
And I'm trustee Ramos, and I vote yes. Motion passes nine, four, and zero against. Moving on to E, discussion in action to approve the 2020-2021 targeted improvement plans. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Motion by trustee Jackson. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Brookins. Please use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to have discussion. Looks like no discussion. I will call on each trustee. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Brookins?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Luvenos?
Yes.
Trustee Paz?
Yes.
You know, trustee Ramos, and I vote yes. Motion passes nine, four, and zero against. On the letter F, discussion in action to approve comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June thirtieth, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
So heard a motion by trustee Jackson and a second by trustee Paz. Please use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to have discussion on this item. Looks like no discussion. I'll call your names, trustees. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Brookins?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yeah.
Trustee Luvenos?
Yes.
Trustee Paz?
Yes.
You know, trustee Ramos, and I vote yes. Nine, four, and zero against. Motion passes. Moving on to G, discussion in action to approve resolution of the Fort Worth Independent School District Board of Trustees authorizing one-time employee stipend. At this time, the trustees will read the resolution. I'll begin. It will be followed by trustee Luvenos, trustee Robbins, trustee Phillips, trustee Jackson, trustee Brookins, trustee Dar, trustee Paz, trustee Evans. So the resolution reads, whereas the board is authorized under Texas Education Code forty-five-point-one-zero-five to expend funds of the Fort Worth Independent School District for purposes necessary in the conduct of the public schools as determined by the board and, whereas the board acknowledges that in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, a significant number of district personnel have during the 2020-2021 school year been called upon to go above and beyond to ensure the success of district operations and...
Whereas the board finds that the need to maintain ongoing morale in these trying times requires that the board in some way recognize the courage and sacrifice of its employees and...
Whereas the board seeks to retain its employees, reduce turnover, increase morale, and help employees focus on work-related matters while at work, and believes that a substantial public purpose exists in doing so.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Fort Worth Independent School District in furtherance of the public purpose so stated in, in this resolution that one, the recitals set forth above are found by the board to be true and correct. Two, all district employees have gone above and beyond this school year and have all contributed to the success of the district's operation and the, during the first semester of the 2020-2021 school year.
Three, all eligible district employees designated full-time employees in the District Municipal Uniform Information System, known as MunIS, shall be entitled to a one-time stipend in the amount of $1,000. The amount earned under this paragraph shall be distributed to employees in December 2020 or as soon thereafter as practical. The payment of $1,000 shall be made in an amount that would allow individual employees to take home $1,000 after all required state and federal deductions have been made.
All district, all eligible district employees designated part-time employees in MunIS shall be entitled to a one-time stipend in the amount of $500. The amount earned under this paragraph shall be distributed to employees in December 2020 or as soon thereafter as practical. The payment of $500 shall be made in an amount that would allow individual employees to take home $500 after all required state and federal deductions have been made.
Number five, all eligible district employees designated substitute employees in MunIS shall be entitled to a one-time stipend in the amount of $500. The amount earned under this paragraph shall be distributed to employees in December 2020 or as soon thereafter as practical. The payment of $500 shall be made in an amount that would allow individual employees to take home $500 after all required state and federal deductions have been made. Eligibility criteria is as follows. A, full-time employees must have worked and been paid since July first, 2020, and must be employed as of December eighth, 2020. B, full-time employees designated as 180-day substitute must have worked and been paid since July first, 2020, and must be employed as of December eighth, 2020. C, hard-time employees must have worked at least eighty hours during the period beginning July one, 2020 through December four, 2020, and must be employed as of December eighth, 2020. D, substitutes, except those referenced above in section SIFs B, must have worked at least twenty full days during the period beginning July one, 2020 through December four, 2020, and must be employed as of December eighth, 2020.
This was, this will be adopted this eighth day of December 2020 by the Fort Worth Independent School District Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Sorry, I think I heard, trust, sorry, who was the first one?
Dar.
Okay. Trustee Dar, motion by trustee Dar. Do I have a second by trustee Jackson? Any discussion? Please use the raise your hand symbol.
Thank you, President Ramos. I will be abstaining on this motion as my wife is an employee of the district.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Dar?
Thank you, President Ramos. As we know, as trustees, my colleagues would probably agree with me when I say that some votes are hard and others may not be so much. This one is not a hard vote for me, and I am thrilled to be able to support this. I would also like to thank Dr. Scribner and his team for making, our chief financial officer for making this happen and doing the work that it takes to make this happen, because the work behind the scenes is great. And please know you are appreciated. I'd also like to thank the voters for making this happen because you supported the TRE in November. The funding is available to recognize the hard work that not only teachers, but everyone in the district does. All of those who are transporting children, feeding children, cleaning up after children, sanitizing, maintaining buildings, providing social and emotional care, providing health services, all of the people that make a district work, and there are many. So thank you very much for making this happen.
Thank you, trustee Dar. Next, trustee Paz.
Ditto. Thank you to our administrative team for bringing this to the board and for pulling this together and allowing us to... allowing us to recognize our staff this way. It's a, it's a good day in Fort Worth I S D.
Thank you, trustee Paz. Trustee Brookins?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the voters who voted for the T R E, um, so we're able to, um, be there for our staff and our teachers. Um, this has not been an easy road and I commend all the teachers and the staff who have, uh, steadfast with us, um, and working with our students and making sure that they continue to get the best education that they can during this trying time. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Ramos. I definitely just echo everything my colleagues have said so far and just, and just the Fort Worth I S D employees just know that, I mean, COVID nineteen has placed us in just, I mean, impossible positions and we just, we thank y'all and we see you. And we know we're in a people business and we know that there's a public health crisis going on. We're not blind to that. We, we, we know everything that's being sacrificed for the education and the well-being of our young people and there are just not enough ways for us to be able to tell y'all thank you. So just hopefully this is in some small way just shows how much you deeply are appreciated for everything you're doing within this district. What's all going?
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Dr. Scribner?
Yes, uh, thank you, President Ramos. I believe our, uh, district council, uh, Ms. Rincon would like to make one final clarifying comment.
Uh, yes, actually I was going to ask Mr. Ball if he could just share with us again clarification. We had a question from a trustee. And I believe it's a clarification that the employees would love to hear regarding the July one date.
Absolutely. Um, the, the clarification is that, um, the, the intent of, of this is that, um, we wanted a, a, a date certain so that there would not be any dispute about any of that. July one happens to be the district's, the beginning of the district's fiscal year. And so any full-time employee who's, who's worked and been paid after that time, regardless of their, of their employment date would be eligible. And as would part-time employees who've actually worked the prescribed number of hours and substitutes who substituted the, the prescribed number of days would be eligible. Because there was some, as, as the public may know, there, there were um, at least two different, uh, start dates at one point in time. And so we didn't want any confusion about that. And so we went back to a date certain, which is July one.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like those are all the comments for discussion. We will move to vote. I will call on each trustee. Please say yes, no, or abstain. Uh, trustee Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Brookins?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Luevanos?
Same.
Trustee Paz?
Heck yeah.
And I'm trustee Ramos and I vote yes. So the motion passes eight, four, zero against and one person abstaining. Um, thank you, board, uh, for the good work on that. Thank you, staff and administration. Uh, item H requires the meeting to be in closed session, but we will go ahead and have comments from the board and superintendent on current district activities and announcements prior to move into closed session. Uh, call on my colleagues and Dr. Scribner, uh, to see if you have any comments. Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, President Ramos. Uh, three quick comments. First, I want to thank the Tarrant Regional Water District, specifically Shanna Kate Granger and J D Granger. Every year they give Fort Worth I S D students, over a thousand students, an hour each of ice time on fresh ice that the rest of us can't get and our kids get it. This year, unfortunately, we don't have field trips. But we're still doing it. Um, we're, we're taking a hundred kids instead of a thousand kids and it will be over spring, I mean, over Christmas break. So I'm very excited and I want to thank them especially because they've provided snacks and they've provided, uh, amenities for the parents to, to skate as well. Uh, secondarily, I want to thank LeDanian Tomlinson, who brought his Team America Foundation over to Poly High School. We fed eight hundred and seventy-five families that day. And if we would have had more food, we could have fed probably a thousand families. As many of you know, seven, six, one, oh, five is the highest poverty district in Tarrant County and in Fort Worth. It is number three in the state of the top twenty-five and the only Tarrant County zip code in the state's top twenty-five. So I focus most of my time in seven, six, one, oh, five, and that is where Poly High School resides. And we're very blessed that L T brought his team over and, uh, we were able to feed twenty-four hundred meals to those eight hundred and seventy-five families. And last but not least, actually the most important thing, the Poly Parrots are going to the football playoffs in Lubbock and they will be playing Lubbock Cooper. So let's all cheer for them and thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you, President Ramos. Simply just, um, uh, happy holidays to everyone. We are almost there, a little over a week to go for most of the employees and, um, I know people looking forward to that time period. I really do hope everyone is able to enjoy, uh, safely, really be able to unwind, enjoy family and just have a really good time. Thank everyone for everything they're doing. You awesome.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. And by the way, congratulations on an award that you recently received and been noted on social media. Congrats. Uh, next, uh, trustee Brookins, any comment?
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to commend, um, Dr. Scribner for reaching out to Governor Abbott to petition for our teachers to get on that first list to, to get, uh, the shots. Um, our, their air, they are on the front line in the battlefield and they need to be in that first group and we wouldn't be able to have our kids continue their education without them. So, um, I'm glad that you stepped up to do that and, um, if you, if you hadn't done it, I was going to ask you to do it. So you beat me to the putts, but that's okay. As long as we make sure that our teachers are safe and healthy, so they can continue to teach our kids.
Thank you, trustee Brookins. Trustee Evans?
No questions or comments.
Trustee Dar?
No questions or comments. Just happy holidays.
Thank you. Trustee Robbins?
Just happy holidays to our staff and our constituents and our, my fellow board members. Uh, hope you all have an opportunity to relax. You've certainly earned it and deserve it and, uh, I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Robbins. Trustee Luevanos?
No comments, uh, no comments. Just happy holidays.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Paz?
I'd like to echo, um, all of my colleagues and wishing our teachers and staff and everyone who keeps Fort Worth I S D running a happy holidays. And I hope that when uh, you're able to go home here in a couple of weeks and you're able to take some time for yourselves and uh, take care of yourselves and really, uh, just dedicate the, this winter break to some rest and relaxation because you have deserved it.
Thank you, trustee Paz. Dr. Scribner?
Thank you very much. Uh, President Ramos, want to thank the board for their kind comments and, uh, very productive conversation today about uh, student, uh, outcomes and teaching and learning. And especially thank the board for supporting this resolution that, uh, uh, will, uh, be in support of all faculty and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have no comments of my own, so we will, um, I'm going to call this meeting so we can move into closed session. The time is ten sixteen P M. And we will move into closed session to discuss the level three grievance of Yolanda Velos. Okay. Uh, the time is eleven eighteen. We are now convened in open session to deliberate, consider and take action on Ms. Velos's level three complaint. Uh, any questions from the board? Um, on, on the, um, level three grievance? Looks like, looks like no questions from the board. Um, looking for a motion concerning level three grievance of Yolanda Velos. And what is that motion?
Um, I, Ashley Paz, move to uphold the administration's decision and deny the relief sought by Ms. Velos. Second.
We have a motion by trustee Paz to uphold the administration's decision and deny the relief sought by Ms. Velos. And we have a second by trustee Toby Jackson. Um, please use the raise your hand feature if you have any discussion on the item. Looks like no discussion. I'll, uh, we'll go to vote and I'll call each trustee, um, see if, uh, you vote yes, no, or abstain. Uh, trustee Jackson?
I vote to uphold, yes.
Okay. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Brookins?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yeah.
Trustee Luevanos?
Yes.
Trustee Paz?
Yes.
And I'm trustee Ramos and I vote yes. Um, uh, the, we have voted unanimously to uphold the administration's decision and deny the relief sought by Mrs. Velos. Um, we have heard all the comments, uh, tonight for the board. Uh, the time is eleven twenty P M and this meeting is adjourned.